City manager, give the introduction to your staff, please.
Yes, thank you, Mayor Gans. Before I introduce staff, just like to make a few comments, if it's okay with the city commission. So in preparation for fiscal year budget 2000, or fiscal year budget 2019, our focus will be to hold the line on expenses. There will be increases in relation to public safety, personal services, which would include health insurance, cost of living, merit, things of that nature, and then we will have very minimal capital project and vehicle purchases. So our plan is to hold the line, so to speak. Unfortunately, one of the largest increases that we will be having this year will be related to law enforcement, and that's due to the requirement for expanded services of the school resource deputy program, which, as we all know, was approved by the state legislature and signed by Governor Scott earlier this year. And we'll hear more about that on Wednesday. What we really want to hit on, and I know Mayor Gans has brought it up at previous meetings, is the fact that this is an expense that should be borne by the Broward Board of Education because, once again, they'll be exempt or immune from the additional homestead exemption that surely will be approved by voters later this year. In fiscal year 2019, we are going to focus on the bond, revenue bond projects for the Tignor Center, the Center for Active Aging, City Hall renovations, street resurfacing, and then, of course, storm water improvements, as well as planned water plant and utility upgrades. We will continue to hone our day-to-day operations in areas such as parks maintenance, streets maintenance, things of that nature. What I really want to talk about isn't so much the upcoming fiscal year, but the upcoming decade and the decades to follow. 2030 looks to be a pivotal decade for our nation. Prediction is that over 50% of current job classifications will be eliminated due to technology and advancements with artificial intelligence. Already, we're observing the start of this phenomenon. If you go to certain McDonald's, maybe not here in South Florida, but even retail shops, particularly in the Pacific Coast and in Asia, they're already not using cashiers, not using retail associates. If you've seen the advancements with the construction industry, they're no longer using workers, they're actually using robots to build buildings from the ground up. Even taxi drivers and others are being replaced by automated vehicles. Our concern is, unlike the past when operators and typewriter sales or repairmen and women were pushed out of the industry because that technology was old, this technology and this wave, it's going to be very different. There are going to be fewer options available for the unemployed, and those that are available are going to require a high skill set and more education. The reason why I bring this up is, for the city of Deerfield Beach, just like what you're seeing over on the Pacific Coast, particularly the Pacific Northwest, we're going to begin to see that in Florida in the coming years, in decades, where you have high property values and not enough wage-earning jobs to support that type of lifestyle. In fact, if you look at Palo Alto and some of the other municipalities in California, you have people that are making six-digit incomes that cannot afford to buy a house. The other area that we're going to see come to fruition will be that of driverless and flying modes of personal transportation. While it might sound far-fetched, it's very close. And while companies such as Tesla and others are in their initial trials, and there's certainly some failures, I have no doubt in my mind that they'll overcome that like the Wright Brothers and other innovators did when they conquered air and space. The usage of drones for deliveries are already happening. There's a pilot program that was sanctioned earlier this year by the Federal Aviation Administration to allow drone delivery of food in certain areas of San Diego County. And certainly, Amazon and Google are exploring and expanding their use of drones for deliveries. And we can expect to see that here in the very near future throughout South Florida. The other area is with unmanned vehicles being used for public safety. I think that's going to be another area. Already, a private company in conjunction with Israeli Defense Forces are developing technology and testing technology for removing wounded combat soldiers on the battlefield. And that's something that we hope to bring into fruition here with the fire rescue department. The other area that we really need to prepare for is actually what will happen to many of our retail and commercial facilities. As drone delivery and automated points of distribution occur within the commercial sectors, particularly retail, what's going to happen to those facilities and, of course, those property values? As a result of these economic changes, we should expect that our property values will change sporadically over the next few decades. Just like the shift of joblessness, we will also experience a more rapid sea level rise than what was previously anticipated. How it's happening is an argument that doesn't need to be addressed by the city commission. How you're going to handle sea level rise will be an issue that has to be resolved by the city commission and future city commissions. Because the estimates have that we will see significant rise by the year 2045, rather than in the 22nd century as previously stated. This, and when Mr. Gressik and Mr. Good do their presentations later this week, you'll see what type of impact that's going to have, particularly in the Cove neighborhood, as well as the Cove Shopping Center. That area will be similar to New Orleans or Venice, Italy, meaning it'll be underwater. However, one of the opportunistic areas for Deerfield Beach is that our city does sit higher than most cities along the coastline in Broward County, and that will certainly provide us with some unique opportunities in the future. The other area that the city commission and future commissions will have to undertake is with the population increase that we're going to see over the next decade. We're actually going to see a definitive trend of an aging and probably a more unemployable population here in South Florida, while the employable skillset individuals will be moving out of the state. And that's something that I know the state of Florida, and in particular, believe the three counties of Miami-Dade, Broward, and Palm Beach are certainly concerned With all of this, city's going to need to formulate a proper mix of single-family, townhomes, multi-tenant residential dwellings to avoid becoming a canyon of high-rises and assisted-living facilities, which could be the future of South Florida. We should protect and improve our single-family home neighborhoods that are east of I-95 all the way to the beach. These land uses will be challenged either at the local, meaning the county, or even at the state level, due to geographical constraints of Broward County. You can't build west, you can't build west, so you're going to build up vertical. Certainly, we know that some of our eastern neighborhoods do have a lower land value or property value. That will change in the future, particularly as we see more sea level rise in other parts of coastal Broward County not be able to withstand water intrusion. Our property will withstand it, at least the vast bulk of the east part of the city. So even with developments like the Sandpiper Point, which is on the former Pinell and Freedom Marina, we need to look at that type of use along with other single-family and townhome uses in the central core of our city, and not necessarily give it up for vertical dense properties except where it's been properly planned, within Pioneer Grove and some other areas in the city. Cities must prepare ordinances and land use changes that allow real estate, especially commercial and industrial, to easily adapt to what will become a volatile and probably ever-changing marketplace of the future. We'll need to focus on resource management for our coastal waterways and our freshwater systems. Sea level rise will begin to encroach in our freshwater aquifers. Our drinking water will be pushed to the limit by population expansion and consumption. Must work on a wider scale with the county, regional, and state agency to curb water pollution and overuse of our coastal resources and our aquifers. There's a little doubt that in the next decade, the federal government will be adopting or approving stricter regulations on both water distribution, as well as wastewater collection and discharge. And that will have a direct impact on our rates. As part of the fiscal year 19 budget, we'll be recommending a passage of a utility master plan, and also to conduct a water rate study, which has not been reviewed since 2008. Doesn't necessarily mean rates are going up, but we do need to have those reviewed. Sustainability is no longer a buzzword. It's actually going to become very much a model of all local government here in South Florida. Costs are going to continue to rise at a rate higher than current revenues and even future revenues can handle. And the answer is not to raise taxes or fees, rather is to continue a strategy of new and redevelopment, hybrid operations where you use both in-house and contractual operations, and continual adaptability to the economic environment of South Florida. We should also prepare to examine the fundamental core of public safety. We've already shown that traditional police operations are antiquated and expensive in comparison to our use of specialized units such as a tactical deployment team and a community outreach and education teams. These models are actually being emulated in other cities throughout Broward County. However, our district was the first to actually develop and implement those. We also need to explore and understand that the use of camera and drone technology will happen in law enforcement and fire rescue operations. It is coming, and we need to embrace it and try to protect the privacy of citizenry and businesses as much as possible. Our goal would be to have cameras, license plate readers at entrances to all neighborhoods and strategically located throughout the city. And then, of course, using drone technology, which we've already been using not only in law enforcement, but in other operations of the city. About a month ago, our police department was actually able to use a drone to apprehend a suspect that had barricaded himself in a residence. So it is here, and it will be used, and it will actually be a much safer and probably much less expensive alternative to hiring more deputies.
1984.
Fire rescue will also undergo major improvements with technologies and other type of medical processes that will become automated. Our ultimate goal would be to reduce the number of personnel, including even the driver, on a vehicle with robotics and other automated Additionally, in the coming years, we're going to recommend that we evaluate the current public safety service model through the Broward Sheriff's Office, which has been great and undeniably less expensive than having an in-house operation. However, we should review options that are available, such as a municipal taxing service unit, which is also a multi-city district. Solid waste and recycling have been strong for us because we control our own operations, unlike many other cities. Now, we need a review of whether we should possess our own transfer facility. That would also serve as a temporary management debris, or temporary debris management site during hurricanes or other major events. This could provide more options to transport waste to other locations via 18-wheelers or rail. And that, hopefully, would avoid the local volatility that we've seen in the processing and disposal of trash when we pick it up and take it to either Waste Management, or Waste Pro, or Sun Bergeron. We'll also analyze the use of driverless technologies for both residential and commercial routes. The last residential increase was in 2008, and we recently implemented a decrease a few years ago in solid waste. So we'll be looking to do a rate study for residential. And Mr. Gressik will be talking about this during his work session on Wednesday. What we're hoping is that the decade of 2020 should be about the investment into infrastructure. Most of our facilities are approaching or are past their 50-year life cycle. They were designed for a small populace with operations to match. Today, we have a multi-ethnic, economically diverse population and business based on adaptability and technology and sustainable philosophies. And our facilities do not, are incapable of handling that. In the next decade, we'll need to capitalize on a strong economy and a low debt ratio, which we do have in our city, to pursue construction of the Tam O Shanter Park, which is 50 acres that was donated to the city, centralized law enforcement headquarters next to the mitigation operations center, which is on I-95 and Southwest 11th Way, near the Southwest 10th Street intersection, and ocean rescue headquarters that will not be underwater, and new or renovated fire stations. These projects cannot be delayed till 2030 or 2040. They are not, they are non-compatible with storm-rated building codes, fire codes, accessibility codes, operational demands, and even with ever-changing technological Deerfield Beach will not be sustainable without new infrastructure. In closing, many of these challenges and advancements will not be exclusively controlled on the city commission dais. It would be vital that city commission play an even greater role at the county, state, and federal levels of policymaking. City must become more relevant at these platforms to affect policy and funding direction critical to Deerfield Beach. While we have been gradually expanding our footprint, neither the political strength of neighboring municipalities nor our need to heighten our importance cannot be underrated. You know, many of us will not be here to see it. The future of Deerfield Beach for the second half of the 21st century will be set in the next decade, meaning 2020. The importance of how you plan and staff executes new policies and projects will determine whether we thrive as a successful, desirable community, or just survive as another South Florida municipality. I'd like to introduce our great property appraiser, Mr. Marty Keir.
There are really three main functions at the Braddock County Property Appraisers Office. The first function is we determine the value of every piece of property in Braddock County, whether it's residential, commercial, tangible personal property, or centrally-assessed property, which are railroads. And the reason that's important is because when folks pay their property taxes, the amount of taxes they pay is a relation between the value of the property that we set and the tax rate set by our local government. So the higher the value of the property, the more taxes folks pay. The lower the value of the property, the lower amount of taxes they pay. So the first thing we want to do is just make sure we get it right. You know, Braddock County's a big place. There's more people here than 13 states, the District of Columbia, and all U.S. territories except Puerto Rico. It's pretty big. And we appraise more parcels than in many states. And even though the 200-some odd people in our office do a very good job, I always tell folks, mistakes can occur. And if somebody believes we've made a mistake with the value of their property, then they can go on our website at bcpa.net to find out, or they'll get a trip notice from us in August. If they think we've made a mistake, give us a call. Come on down to our office, or we'll come to you. And if we made a mistake, we'll adjust the value accordingly, or we'll let you know exactly how we arrive at any particular value. The second thing that we do is we give tax-saving exemptions to folks that qualify. And you know, under Florida law, there are a lot of exemptions that folks qualify for. The most important one's the homestead exemption. That basically means that $50,000 of value is going to be taken off the tax roll. You don't pay taxes on, can save maybe 800, 900, possibly 1,000 bucks a year. And most importantly, you'll make sure you'll never be taxed out of your home because it caps the value of your tax at 3% a year, or the consumer price index, whichever's lower. This year, the consumer price index is 2.1%. So even if the market value of your home goes up 50, 60, 70, 80%, the value of your tax on can't go more than 2.1%. There are many other exemptions after that. There are low-income senior exemptions. There are veterans exemptions. There are disability exemptions. And it's our goal to find every single person in Braddock County entitled to a tax-saving exemption and to give it to them because they've earned it, they deserve it under the law. The third thing that we do is we crack down on folks who are trying to cheat the system. You know, as I said just before, if somebody's entitled to a tax-saving exemption, we need to give it to them. Conversely, if somebody's doing something they're not supposed to do, if they're getting a benefit they're not supposed to get, then that's not okay either. And we have a very aggressive fraud division that goes throughout the county every single day, and it cracks down on people who are not playing by the rules. And what we'll do is, if somebody's getting an exemption they're not entitled to get, we'll take away the illegal exemption. We'll backtax them up to 10 years, include a 50% penalty and 15% interest. It's a hefty fine, but that's because we wanted to deter people from trying to cheat the system. And just to give you an idea, our office has put about $7 billion of value back on the tax roll countywide. That equates to millions of dollars of property taxes paid a year, and we've collected about $70 million in back taxes from folks and have returned that to the taxpayers. Those are really our main functions. But I also brought here just a quick PowerPoint as to where the county is right now, and also, most importantly, where the city of Deerfield Beach is right now. And I can tell you, Deerfield Beach is doing very, very well, and is actually doing, I think, better overall than the county average, which I think is really good. The first page of the PowerPoint that I brought is just kind of a fun number. This is basically, if you took all the property in Braddock County, residential and commercial, this doesn't include tangible personal property or railroads, but you took residential and commercial property, and you sold it on the open market. In 2017, you would have got about $250.2 billion. For 2018, there's been about a 7.086% increase in overall value to about $268 billion. That's a lot of money, but Braddock County is a big place. The next number is what the county commission is currently utilizing to determine the amount of money it needs in its budget for this year. In 2017, you'll notice that the taxable value was about $166.9 billion. This year, there's been an 8% increase in value to about $180.3 billion in value. That's a big increase. And to give you an idea, if the county commission keeps its millage rate the same, at 5.4623, that's their 2017 operating millage rate, if they don't increase it or reduce it, they'll be bringing in another $74,394,000 in revenue, more this year than last year. That's a pretty good chunk of money. But what's amazing about that is the vast majority of that is not being paid for by our homeowners here in Braddock County, because if you're homesteaded, the value of your tax on can't go up more than 2.1%. It's really being paid for because we have a lot of property changing hands, and there's a lot of new construction countywide. Here in Deerfield Beach, on Fort Lauderdale, there's just a lot of new construction that's driving that. The next page is just an interesting kind of snapshot where the county is. You have almost 400,000 homesteaded property owners. You have about 352,000 homesteaded property owners that have the additional homestead exemption because their property's worth more than $50,000. You have about almost 24,000 low-income seniors that have an additional exemption, and there are many other exemptions. The one I always like to highlight is there are 2,158 American heroes who are totally and permanently disabled veterans that became disabled while serving us. They are fully exempt from paying property taxes. They've made Braddock County their home. The next page, I just wanted to highlight, is just some of the work that our office does when it comes to getting out into the community. You know, it's not very easy to get to downtown Fort Lauderdale for a lot of folks. And so we want to bring our office to the public. And we have a very aggressive mobile exemption and information team that goes to the public every single day and helps people with their property. This year alone, for example, our team has attended about 556 events. We've helped about 89,000 residents, and we've taken thousands of applications, homestead applications and others from residents to help them save money. And for us, it's very important. I want to thank you all because Deerfield Beach has been a great partnership partner with us. Not only do we have standing events, I believe, at City Hall, but also at Century Village and others, just to make it very accessible to the public. The next page is basically Deerfield Beach. And this kind of gives you a snapshot of where you all are. And as you'll see, Deerfield Beach is actually doing better than Braddock County as a whole, and actually doing better than many of our cities are when it comes to your values. The first page is not the number that you're going to be utilizing as you determine how much money you want for this year. This is just basically a number. If you took all the commercial and residential property, and you sold it on the open market in Deerfield Beach, for 2017, you would get about $8.85 billion. In 2018, there's been an 8.3% increase in value to about $9.6 billion. That's a big increase in value, and a lot of that is because there's a lot of property changing hands here, and there's been a lot of new developments. The next page is really the page that you're, the number that you'll be utilizing in determining your money for this year. Now, I have to let you know, this doesn't include tangible personal property or centrally-assessed property, which are railroads. The numbers will change slightly when it comes to the number you're going to use. This is basically all the residential and commercial property. So in 2017, there was about a, your taxable value was about $6.127 billion. For 2018, there's been a 9.2% increase in value to about $6.688 billion. So here's what that means real money-wise. If the city of Deerfield Beach holds its millage rate the same, its operating millage rate at 6.0981, if it does increase it or decrease it, based on these numbers, you'll be looking at another $3,410,000 more this year than last year. That number will change slightly, like I said, once we include tangible personal property and centrally-assessed property. That's a pretty good increase that you all will be getting. And again, I think it's important to note that the majority of that is not being paid for by your homeowners because they're homesteaded. Their value can't go more than 2.1%. It's because you have a lot of property changing hands. A lot of people want to live here in Deerfield Beach, and you also have a lot of new construction. In Deerfield Beach, you have about 16,500 homesteaded property owners. You have about 12,836 homesteaded property owners that get the additional exemption. You have 1,459 low-income seniors who get an additional exemption. And I like going all the way down. I just wanted to just highlight the number 92, because that's how many totally and permanently disabled veterans that you have here that became disabled while serving us. They don't pay property taxes, but they deserve every bit that they save, and they've made Deerfield Beach their home. The next few pages kind of give you an idea of just some interesting facts about Deerfield Beach. The first page is basically the average value for single-family homes in Deerfield Beach. The market value, basically what a willing buyer would pay a seller, is approximately $241,360. The assessed value, basically the taxable value, is $175,300. And you have right now 14,434 single-family homes here in Deerfield Beach. The next is the average values for condominiums. You have about 17,142 condos. The average market value is approximately $109,771, basically what a buyer would pay a seller for a condo. And the average taxable value is $90,700. The next page are the biggest construction projects that were put on the tax roll this year for Deerfield Beach. And what I did was, I had my staff put six of them in here. The biggest is a 117-unit apartment building on Crystal Lake Drive, and that is where there's been $20 million, $900,436 of value added to your tax roll net alone. The next is a $15 million increase in your value, which is on, which is a warehouse on actually 220 Hillsborough Technology Drive. Is that right here?
Yeah.
That's right here. You also have two Wawa's coming in, which I'm kind of excited about because their sandwiches rock. And that is adding some value to your tax roll. You have another warehouse, and finally, you have a Dunkin' Donuts, which I'm very happy about because I'm a fan of Dunkin' Donuts, not Starbucks. My wife is the opposite. The next is, those were a single parcel, so those were the biggest folios. The next one is basically a number of folios. This is when you have a condominium complex. Generally, you have more than one folio, and so there is a Generally, you have more than one folio, and so there is one new condo that has a number of different folios, so a number of units that was added this year. And that is, it's called the Fordham Condo Project, and that added $4,300,000 of value to the tax roll. The last thing, the last couple of things I wanted to bring up before I took any questions, Mr. Mayor, I appreciate you having me today, is, you know, here at the Broward County Property Appraisals Office, we love social media, and the reason being is because it's free, so it saves taxpayer dollars, and it's a great way to communicate with the public. So we have Facebook, Twitter, LinkedIn, everything you could think of, and it's our goal to provide the public with as much information as possible. So if anybody would want to follow us, we're basically @MartyCareVCPA, that's our same handle on all of them. It's @M-A-R-T-Y-K-I-A-R-V-C-P-A. We would love for the folks here to follow us, because we do have a lot of good information. And the last two things I wanted to bring up, because a resident had emailed me and asked me to answer two questions specifically. They had indicated they weren't sure if you were going to have questions from the audience, so I emailed back that I would gladly answer these. The first question was, they wanted to know if we believe that the city's property values are under assessed from the beach out to the turnpike, including commercial, residential, and industrial. And I wanted to let you know, I did bring, I had anticipated this question may come up from the commission as well. So I actually brought my Director of Commercial, that's Abby Roberson, and our Director of Residential, which is Bill Behringer, they're the two top folks in our office that handle the appraisals for both commercial and residential. And they can get into it to more detail, but we believe that they're assessed fairly and accurately. And the reason being is because it's basically they're assessed based on the data. And I know when we had met recently in our office, you know, the city of Deerfield Beach brought up some interesting issues, where it said, "Well, in our CRA district, we've invested all this money, why haven't the values risen?" Well, it's really based on the data. And I'll give you some examples. Let's say a property changes hands. If it changes hands and it's an arms-length transaction, we're going to base the value on the purchase price. If it doesn't change hands, then there's a few ways where you get to the value. The first is if it is a relatively new property that hasn't changed hands, but it was, let's say, a couple of years changed hands, then what we're going to do is, we're going to look at the comparable sales in the year before. We're going to adjust them to fit whatever that property is to determine its value. Also, if the property has been there for some time, there's also a 10% cap on non-homesteaded value that keeps the assessed value low. But every single property out there is really just based on the data that we have, so we believe it's very accurate, and they can address it better and more detail than I can. The second question was, and I'll read the question, and I'll tell you my answer. It says, "The average tax collections by the city have averaged 98% over the last 10 years. In your opinion, based on this chart, is the city underreporting property tax income in their budgeting process by using only a 95% collection rate?" And my response is, the city's doing it appropriately. And the reason being is because you can't budget based on 100% or 98%, because at the end of the day, people are going to pay their taxes early, so you get a 4% discount. That takes out a big chunk. And they're also, it's going to change slightly as well based on value adjustment board hearings, where people challenge our values, things of that nature. So basing it on 95% is, I think, a good number to be able to utilize. It's a safe number, so you can really make sure you have the money in your budget. With that said, Mr. Mayor, I've had a lot of coffee, so I'm a little bit wired, and I apologize about that. But I just want to thank you all so much for having me today. And is there any questions that you all have?
Commissioner.
Good job.
Oh, thank you so much, Joe. I really appreciate that. And, you know, and I did want to add just once again that, I know I said this at the beginning, but I wanted to say it again, I really do love this city. My favorite vacation on the face of the earth, like I said, is coming to Deerfield Beach the first week of August every single year, and so this community actually is very, very special to me. But I do have to caveat that by saying again that I love all of our 31 cities.
Marty, it's not a question. I just want to, I'm not putting you on the spot, but call me because I need your help with some District 2 stuff.
Of course, of course.
Thank you.
Oh, no, thank you so much, Gloria, and I have to thank you as well, because, you know, you helped me tremendously with something. You know, when I first got elected to this position, I was trying to figure out how do I reach the community to let them know what we can do, because there's so much we can do. And the first commissioner in all of Broward County to invite me to basically a forum that was being put on was you. And when I went there, I realized, holy cow, we can help a lot of folks. We actually signed up a number of folks that evening for exemptions, whether it was homestead exemptions or senior exemptions, to help them with their property. And when that occurred, I realized there was a lot we could do in this community, and so basically, your help was really kind of the impetus that helped us really reach the rest of the Broward County. I want to thank you for that.
Thank you.
Aw, thank you. Sleep.
It's the property appraiser. Marty, can you talk about portability briefly, and what that means, and how that affects the residents and what they can do?
Absolutely. That is a great question. I appreciate you so much for bringing that up. You know, portability gives folks the opportunity to move from one home to another home and not be taxed out of that new home. And let me tell you what used to happen. So before 2008, before portability was law, here's what would occur. Somebody would buy a home, and they would file for homestead. And once they filed for homestead, the value that they were taxed on couldn't go up more than 3% a year, or the consumer price index was ever's lower. So if they were in their property for a long time, the market value would get very high, but that assessed value would stay low because there was that cap. Now, that means that they were paying taxes on that lower value. So let's say now they wanted to buy a new home. Before 2008, let's say they would sell this home for $500,000. Now they move to this new home for $500,000. That would then get reset to market value, and so their taxes would go way up, because they would lose all that value that they weren't paying taxes on. In 2008, the voters of Florida amended the Constitution to allow for portability, to allow people to transfer that value. So what occurs is, now you, let's say you bought a home, and you filed for homestead, that value could not go up more than 3% a year, so over time, the market value gets high, and then your taxable value stays low. If you now buy a home of equal value or greater value, you can transfer your homestead from that property to the new property, take all that value with you, up to about, up to $500,000 of value. If you buy a home of lower value, you take a percentage of that, and we're able to figure that out for you. And you could do it anywhere in the state of Florida. You can only have one homestead per family unit, but you can move, whether it's from Broward County to Broward County, Deerfield Beach to Plantation, or you can go Deerfield Beach to Pensacola. You can take that with you, and it really gives people the opportunity to be able to afford to live in a new home and not be taxed out of it. And it's something I'm very proud of. I have to find the final numbers for this year, but last year, the Department of Revenue indicated that there was more portability value transferred in Broward County than anywhere else in the state, and that makes me very, very proud. I hope that answers the question.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
Here.
We've actually, oh, specifically to Deerfield. Oh, yes, specifically to Deerfield. What Abby just showed me was that this year, you've actually had $11,673,520 of value transferred in portability just in Deerfield alone. That's basically people moving that over, that they don't now, so their taxes will stay low. That's a great thing. You all are doing very well here. You definitely are.
From a Broward County standpoint, with the reset that happened when the market crashed, obviously, that was the new normal for everybody's taxable values at that point, regardless if the bubble lasted, burst, and when prices went down, and it shot back up the next year, they're reset at that lowest value. Is that correct?
It is. What happened was, if you remember, before the crash, property values were getting very high. I'm actually one of those folks that got nailed it. I bought my townhouse at the height of the boom. I think I paid $345,000 or $2,005, maybe, and I think ultimately, it ended up going down to about $120,000. So it went down. But we loved it, it was our family home, and we were able to afford it, so we enjoyed it. But what occurred was, you had the height where the values were varied, because it's always based on the sales. And then when it crashed, then everything kind of, it's always based on the sales, or everything kind of goes along with it. And that's the new, that's where it resets at. You're 100% accurate.
So from there, it's 3% or the CPI, whichever's...
Yes, or the consumer, whichever's lower. And there were, you know, right now, the CPI, it's been, it was 2.1% this year, 2.1% last year, but if I remember the years before that, some of the years didn't even break 1%. So I don't think it's been 3% for quite some time.
Yeah, in 2016, 2015, it was below 1%.
Yes, absolutely. And that's, you're 100% accurate.
Okay, thank you. Any questions? Commissioner Draskey?
The city manager brought up the homestead exemption that's likely to be passed this fall.
Yes.
Has your office evaluated how those numbers are going to potentially wreak havoc on the cities in Deerfield Beach? And do you have any, specifically about Deerfield Beach or Broward County as a whole?
I can give you both. Actually, as I was coming here, I was, I decided to run Deerfield Beach's numbers because I anticipated that question would possibly come up. So let me give you my thoughts, and I'll tell you where I think it would be okay, and also where it could be a big problem. So just for, you know, everybody's, you know, edification, there's going to be a ballot initiative, this year's ballot, to increase the homestead exemption by an additional $25,000 of value. The way it currently works, the first $25,000 of value of your property, you don't pay taxes on. Then, from $25,000 to $50,000, you pay taxes on, everybody pays on it. Then there's a second exemption from $50,000 to $75,000 of value that's in effect now that is another homestead exemption where you don't pay taxes except for your school taxes. So the city is fully, the city taxes you don't pay on, county you don't pay on, you pay on the school. There's an additional exemption on the ballot that would, what would happen is, you would now pay taxes from $75,000 to $100,000 of value, but from $100,000 to $125,000 of value, that would be a third homestead exemption where you would pay, you would pay no taxes except for your school taxes. And it will be on the November ballot, and if more than 60% of Florida's resident voters who are voting the electorate vote for it, then it will become law, and it would take effect. I'll tell you when it would take effect, and I'll tell you the effect it would have. It would be vote line in November of 2018. It would affect the values in 2019, and it would affect everybody's budgets in 2020. And I'll tell you, right now, the average Broward County property owner would save between $350 to $400. That's how much their taxes would be reduced if it passes. So that's the amount that they would save personally. But there could potentially be a big hit to local governments as well, and that's why I always tell folks when they vote for this, you know, they just basically just take everything into consideration and vote the way they think is best for their communities, for themselves, and for their family. And I'll give you some examples. First, I'll give you Broward County, then I'll give you Deerfield Beach. Right now, Broward County sees about an 8% increase in value. So that 8% increase means that if they don't change their millage rate, they'll receive an additional $75 million more this year than last year. If the $25,000 additional homestead exemption were in effect today, they will lose about, I'd say about $30 million, maybe $35 million. So they still come out about $40 million ahead. So they, and that, I'm sure they could, they could, they could deal with. What I tell folks, though, is when it gets difficult, is when you don't have an 8% increase in value, you have an 8% decrease in value. And that's what people understand, just like when we hit, when we went, hit rock bottom the last time. So imagine it's reversed, and Broward County, rather than having 8% increase in value, now has an 8% decrease in value. What that basically means is they're going to lose $75 million right off the top, and then lose another $35 million on the bottom of that. Now they have to make up $105 million or $110 million. That's a lot of services that are provided to the rents of the county. And so I'll give you Deerfield as well. As I said before, the average Deerfield property owner would save between $350 and $400 a year. That would be money in their pocket that they would get, their taxes would be reduced by. If it were in effect today, Deerfield Beach would lose right about $1,100,000. That would be the deficit that would hit Deerfield Beach today. But Deerfield Beach has seen, you know, an 8.3%, no, a 9.2% increase in value. So you're getting about, if you don't change your millage rate, you get about $3.4 million today. So really, you'd have to, you would lose a million, you're gaining 3.4, you still come out about $2 million, $2 million ahead, or $2.4 million ahead. The problem is, though, if it was reversed, again, if Deerfield Beach doesn't have a 9.2% increase in value, but it's a 9.2% decrease, then you'd be losing $3.4 million, and then you'd lose another $1,100,000 on top of that, now having to make up, you know, $4.5 million out of your budget, that's a pretty significant amount of money, and that translates to a lot of services that you provide, and then you'd have to make a decision, do you want to cut services, or do you want to raise taxes? And so those are really just kind of an overall broad overview of the exemption. And really, what I just tell folks is, look, you know, this is one of those issues where now it's up to the public. The public's going out to vote, and then all they have to really do is just study it and just make the best decision possible for themselves, their families, and their community. Hope that answered your question.
Absolutely, thank you.
Oh, yes, of course, Bernie.
In your wildest dreams, do you anticipate the average public voter saying, "I'm going to give up $350 or $400 out of my pocket so that the city has less of a problem"?
Well, I think that, looking at 2008 is a good example, because in 2008, not only did they pass portability, but that's also when the additional $25,000 exemption was passed as well. And if I remember, in Broward County, it passed overwhelmingly.
Yeah.
So I would assume that this is probably going to be very similar to where overall statewide, I would think this would pass overwhelmingly.
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay.
Definitely.
Thank you.
Oh, no, thank you, thank you, Bernie.
Any other questions? Thank you so much.
Oh, thank you so much, Mr. Mayor, and again, thank you all for the great work that you all do. And I'm sorry that I can't stay for too much longer. As much as I would definitely love to hear about how my one-week-a-year hometown is doing, you know? I do have to get home, but I just want to thank you for having me, and if there's anything that I can do or my office can do, please call us anytime. We just, we really do appreciate our very good relationship with the city of Deerfield Beach, and, you know, and, you know, like I said, anything we can do would be our pleasure to assist in anyway. So, thank you, Mr. Mayor, thank you to the commission for having us today.
Please, the city commission, I'll have our budget manager, Allison Teslia, give a brief Budget 101 presentation, and some of the information we feel will be valuable to the citizenry as well as the city commission. Thank you.
Good evening. I'm Allison Teslia, and I'm the budget manager. Today, I'll be giving an overview of the budget process, so you can have a better understanding of why we budget the way we do, and some of the requirements we must follow. The budget is a blueprint for the upcoming fiscal year. Our budget provides specific pertinent information to its readers per the Government Finance Officers Association's best practices. The budget document is broken down into these major sections, which not only provide revenue and expenditure data, but also gives an overview of the city's financial health, strategic priorities, staffing level information, and management's goals for the year. In the transmittal letter section, the reader will gain an understanding of the city manager's vision, the critical issues facing the city, the recommended policies and procedural changes, as well as milestones that were reached during the current fiscal year. The introductory section provides a brief history of the city, an overview of its customers, The introductory section provides a brief history of the city, an overview of its customers, its principal products and services, as well as its mission, its mission statement and philosophy. This section also includes a description of the budget process, the budget calendar, as well as miscellaneous statistical information. Similar to an individual with more than one checking account, a municipality categorizes revenue and expenditures into separate funds according to specific purposes. In the budgetary data by fund section, each department and division within the fund is identified. Schedules of detailed revenue sources and expenditures are provided and the goals and objectives, as well as performance measures for each department are outlined. The debt administration section provides an overview of the city's debt policy. It gives a description of each outstanding bond issue as well as the city's existing debt service requirements, including future minimum lease payments. This section also presents the calculation of the city's legally authorized debt limit and margin. The capital improvement summary provides a comprehensive listing and explanation of the capital needs of the city for the next five years and the impact of capital improvements on the current year's operating budget. The glossary provides the reader with a listing of terms and acronyms that are frequently utilized in the budget. Per Florida statutes, municipalities must adopt a balanced budget. A budget is balanced when all sources of funds equal all uses of funds. The total sources of funds include any funds left over from the prior year and new revenues expected to come in during the fiscal year. Per state statutes, ad valorem revenues are projected at 95% of the revenue estimates. Contracts and grants are typically budgeted at 100% and the cash carryover from the prior year is also budgeted at 100%. Certain revenues can only be used for specific purposes. For example, gas taxes can only be used for transportation purposes. Fire assessment fees can only be used for fire safety and stormwater fees can only be used for stormwater related expenditures. Total use of funds includes operating expenses such as personnel and expenditures used in regular operations, capital improvements, inter-fund transfers, and any reserves. Based on Florida statutes, the city is required to adopt a budget each year and is bound to follow specific guidelines in order to meet TRIM compliance. We are given specific dates to complete tasks and forms to file with supporting documentation in order to prove that we are following those requirements as regulated by the Florida Department of Revenue. The property tax rate is referred to as a millage, which is the amount that property owners pay for every $1,000 of taxable value. Here is a, here is a breakdown of how a typical homesteaded property owner's tax dollars would be allocated here in the city. As you can see, the city only receives a portion of the homeowner's property taxes paid. The city's fiscal year runs from October 1st to September 30th, but the budget cycle never really ends. As soon as the new fiscal year begins, we start planning for the next year's budget. Typically in the late fall, we review the strategic goals and come up with a set of parameters for the upcoming budget year. These parameters may include anything from anticipated changes in expenditures, staffing levels, tax rates, and regulatory requirements. In January, the city manager and budget staff begin holding budget meetings with departments to provide guidelines for the upcoming year. In these meetings, we discuss various topics such as their performance measures, staffing needs, budget requests, and their alignment with strategic priorities, which in turn help to determine the items that are included in the draft budget. In addition, we look at the revenues and expenditures to date and analyze any deviations that may need to be considered in the next year's budget. The budget office calculates certain expenses for the departments. For example, pay projections are made for personnel expenditures by using current staff salaries plus any proposed changes in staff and extrapolate anticipated COLA and MERA increases. We use similar personnel data to calculate each department's portion of the insurance services allocation, which is based on projected insurance costs and the number of full-time equivalents in each division. In June, the property appraiser releases the preliminary taxable property values, which assists the city in budgeting for its largest source of general fund revenue, which is property taxes. Subsequently, a round of budget workshops are held with the city commission where the departments are able to present and discuss their recommendations for the upcoming budget year. In the beginning of July, the property appraiser issues the final taxable property values and the city commission adopts the tentative property tax rates based on those values. In mid-July, the state of Florida issues their projected shared revenues that cities and counties receive from them for funds related to sales tax, communication service taxes, and fuel taxes. Once the tentative property tax rate is set, budget staff is able to prepare the budget recommendation and capital improvement plan. Per the city's charter requirements, the budget recommendation is provided to the city commissioners no later than August 15th. In September, two public hearings are held and taxpayers are, taxpayers are given the opportunity to make public statements to the city commission about the budget and tax rates. Then the budget is officially adopted in the second public hearing and not long after that, the new fiscal year begins. Budget process.
Thank you. Commission, any questions? Mr. Parnas?
Assuming for a moment that I pay $500 in taxes on my county tax form, how much comes back to Deerfield?
It would be about 30% of that.
30%, okay. Thank you.
No problem.
Any other questions?
Quick question, just to follow up to Commissioner Parnas. So assuming those $500 then, if we say like you just said, 30% goes to Broward County. Deerfield gets, even though we budget for the entire amount, we only get 30% of that dollar.
Out of a dollar, we would get 30% of it.
We would get 30%.
We would or you would?
Not me.
Not you.
The city of Deerfield.
The city gets 30%.
The city would get 30% and this was based on this year's, this current fiscal year's tax rates.
Okay.
So, so in terms of us, when we're looking at millage rate and all of that stuff, we're also looking at what the county is going to take out of that dollar.
Well, they don't necessarily take it out of ours.
Just follow me.
Okay.
Okay? Not out of ours. I know we get 30% of that $1. The school board gets 6%. Or the hospital gets 6%.
The hospital gets 6%.
School board gets 3%.
No, they were at 30 as well.
30%. School board is 30%. And what's that other that gets like 3% or whatever the case may be? Point being, you know, we sit here and we try to do the best that we can as commissioners in terms of making that dollar or actually we're the, the collector of those taxes based on, and, and if I'm wrong, Mr. Dunkley, clear me up here, okay? Help me out. We're, we're collecting that dollar and out of that dollar, all of these people have to be paid.
Actually, we don't, we don't collect the dollar?
No. Okay. I understand that.
Okay.
Okay, just, just for, just follow me here.
Okay.
There's this dollar, okay? And so many people have to get paid out of that dollar. But we're the ones here taking the hit. Don't raise this and don't raise that, millage or whatever. When we know that somebody has to get this dollar and out of that dollar is going to get, somebody's going to get X percent. We're only going to get 30% of that. So point being here, citizens in terms of being outraged about the 30% ought to al- always be outraged about the 100%
Yes.
and make their voices heard at other forums, just like they do us at Deerfield Beach.
Definitely.
Point. That's, that's my point. Thank you.
Any other questions? Thank you so much.
Thank you. Next, I'll have Ms. Nicole Giordano speak about strategic plan and also performance measures that we'll be implementing in fiscal year 19. We will be bringing forward many new performance measures in the different departments. However, when they do the presentations, you might not see all of their performance measures, but you'll see the ones that are most pertinent.
Good evening, Nicole Giordano, program and innovation manager. So tonight I will be providing an update on the fiscal year 18 action plans and changes to the performance measures. On January 26th, sorry. January 16th, 2018, the strategic plan was adopted along with fiscal year 18 action plans. Those plans included coastal and waterway management, education initiative, central core, and parks and recreation capital improvements. The coastal waterway action plan is to develop and implement programs with the intention of preserving, conserving, and enhancing the local waterways and coastal resources. This is being accomplished through vessel exclusion, coastal and waterway cleanups, and coastal workshops. The vessel exclusion permit has received authorization from the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers, Florida Department of Environmental Protection, and Broward County. We are currently awaiting Coast Guard authorization and then bid solicitation for construction. The city has received a notice of intent to issue permit from the Florida Department of Environmental Protection and the National Marine Fisheries Services has provided comments to the Army Corps of Engineers and we are expecting authorization shortly. Staff has held coastal cleanups with over 1,700 volunteers for 8,600 hours and 2,800 pounds of debris removed since 2015. The waterway cleanup get and litter program has removed 14,500 pounds of debris from the city waterways since 2015. Two coastal workshops were held to discuss the new coastal and waterway division and develop the comprehensive beach management plan and receive feedback on the topic of coastal armory. The education initiative action plan is to promote quality education, encourage community involvement, and support local public schools through developing relationships with Broward County School Board, local public schools in Deerfield Beach, Broward Children's Services Council, Early Learning Coalition, and other community organizations. To date, the education advisory board has met six times. The EAB members met with the principals of each local public school to identify the school's need and support needed. Staff successfully completed the first year in both the tutor mate and reading pals program with 15 participants with an anticipated increase to 30 the next school year. Staff holds quarterly principal roundtables to develop and maintain relationships with the local public, private, and charter schools. Three meetings were held in fiscal year 18. The central core action plan is to continue to build the Pioneer Grove DVR zoning districts and its surrounding areas to create a town center. The areas will provide a mix of residential office and commercial space to create new commercial and residential development within and around these areas. A charrette was held on February 26th, 2018 to address potential changes to the Dixie Business Residential Zoning District. In fiscal year 18, the city commission has approved land development code amendments to include sign code, medical marijuana, telecommunications, self-storage, vacation rentals, planned industrial district, co-overlay district, code compliance, standard housing code, and community appearance board. The Planning and Development Services Department is in the process of completing phase two of the Pioneer Grove Dixie Highway Infrastructure Master Plan. Parks MX Capital Improvements is to add park space to our inventory to increase the percentage of park space closer to the national median of 7%. Currently, the city is at about 3%. These projects will enhance the quality of life for residents by improving access to a multiplicity of recreational opportunities. The brand Hilda Richardson Knowles Memorial Park is currently under construction. The project is moving quickly to complete under the grant deadline. Johnny Tignor Community Center and the Center for Active Aging facility are in the design phase. In maintaining alignment with the strategic plan, staff revise the performance measure guiding principles to directly reflect the strategic priorities that include to promote and protect a prosperous atmosphere for residents, businesses, and visitors. Cultivate an environment that promotes and protects a high quality of life for residents. And develop infrastructure, facilities, and organizational capacity for a sustainable community. At the beginning of this budget process, staff met with each department to go over existing and new performance measures that can be measured based on the quality they provide and overall operations of the department. Performance is something staff is actively reviewing even from an environmental aspect. Recently, sustainable management has acquired a contract for performance-based contracting, using data analytics to decrease our environmental impact, reduce energy and operational costs, and improve infrastructure. The intent is to use this kind of data tracking but for performance measures. By updating programs that enable data tracking, staff will be able to improve performance while also providing a stronger base for tracking performance measures. Some of the departments have initiated new processes or programs this fiscal year that enable us to track efficiencies and identify areas of improvement within the departments. A great example of this change is facilities maintenance. An antiquated paper tracking work order system was replaced with a cloud-based software. Facility Dude enables staff to track assets, plan for preventative maintenance, and allocate staff appropriately for maximum workflow. This type of minimal change has a huge impact. It brings our workforce into the 21st century. It identifies areas of improvement and can be cross-functional between multiple departments. Going forward, the performance measures for each department will grow and adapt as these new processes and our programs are initiated. Thank you.
Do you have any questions?
Just for clarity, so when will we see the performance measures that each department will be held accountable for?
Go ahead.
So following these budget work sessions, having an idea of the commission intent and the funding available, staff will meet, will meet with the departments and go over funding available and the action plans that they intend to bring forward this year. I would propose that they would at least be on the agenda in September.
Okay. The performance measures, how often will the, will the commission be able to look at, look at them and check in to get an evaluation of where, where we're progressing throughout the year?
For the departments that currently have the programs, it's a little easier to do that. In terms of the action plans, yes. Staff is actually reporting on that, providing quarterly reports. So the action plans, we could provide a, a live time update. For the performance measures, it's kind of a case by case, given on what the departments have. So yes and no. Sorry.
They will be able to be evaluated at the end of the year to determine whether or not they reach those goals?
Yes.
City manager? Yeah, Mr. Mayor, thank you. Yes, so the goal is to actually have them reviewed quarterly and available not only to the commission, but also to the public. As Ms. Giordano said, some operations, we won't have the ability to, to implement the full array of performance measures yet. But as we convert their, their software or upgrade their software, which Mr. McKenzie, our new chief information officer, will talk about, we will be able to expand that. The, the goal for, for the city would be that you will be able in the future to track every work project and every operation that we do via data analytics. We really want to be a knowledge-based decision-making organization. And in order to do that, you have to have inventory control software and other things. For instance, when we put together a budget, we want to be able to capture all costs. So let's say that Mr. Good's Department of Environmental Services has a water line, water line or water main break. We want to be able to track not only the employee time, but what materials they use, what vehicle and gas they used, and then extrapolate even the maintenance on that vehicle. And that's the truest and best form of, of performance management that can happen. Does that answer your question?
Yes, it does. Thank you. Any other questions from the commission? Not seen, right? Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor Gads, Vice Mayor, Bala, Commissioners. As always, it's my utmost pleasure to present the city's financial condition, especially at this point of the year. It gives us some room to look backwards as well as look forward as we try to formulate a budget for you. Some of the things which I am about to go over, the property appraiser has gone over, but what I'll do is accentuate some of the minute or minutia that will even highlight further some of the points that the property appraiser had made. In terms of the, what I plan to go over could be viewed in three sections. I'm going to go over the current financial condition of the city, the revenue trends, and I'll go over some economic trends. Overall, the financial condition of the city is relatively healthy. The general fund balance is at a healthy point of $24.9 million. The enterprise funds are equally on sound footing. The combined unrestricted net position, which is analogous to the unassigned fund balance for the general fund, is at $29.1 million. As was mentioned earlier, our bond rating is very strong, that of a double A rating from both rating agencies, Fitch as well as S&amp;P. The city has relatively low debt burden. In terms of debt burden, it is evident in the fact that although we're legally allowed to issue $160 million in bonded debt, and what I mean by bonded debt, I mean general obligation bonds, we only have $16 million of such debt outstanding. And to put that into perspective, the city's total assessed value is $8 billion. And the property appraiser just gave me a little bit of slack because his is 8.8 and change. But for the sake of just this example, we have $8 billion in assessed value. And our debt policy states that we can borrow up to 2% of that amount, or $160 million. Today, to date, or as of this date, we only have $16 million of bonded debt or GOV debt outstanding. Further, the fact that the city is essentially built out, as indicated on the slide, is the bottom portion of the slide is, is... the bottom portion of the slide, is, and just quickly before I go to the built-out nature of the city, the funding source for capital projects, and I know by your approving the recent issuance of our Revenue Improvement Bond, this is kind of pushed us to a great position of being able to build infrastructure and to continue on that program because without the funding mechanism for these capital projects, the city as compared to other municipalities, laboring municipalities, which have had the utility taxes for several decades, we're still trying to build a mechanism for ongoing capital projects. In terms of the built-out nature of the city, and if you would bear with me, I'm going to kind of use an anecdote here, and our planning director is not here this evening, and I'm going to kind of link the two departments, finance and planning, and say that we are somewhat inextricably bonded together because of this very fact. The land use planning has quite a bit to do with the direction of our property values. And the fact that we're built out is somewhat of a blessing and a curse. We're built out in that the amount of developable, developable land does not exist as much. However, this gives us a good opportunity for land use planning, which is where Mr. Power will be delving into later on during the week. The fund balance history has been chronicled by several presentations. It's on an upward trend. The fund balance balance has increased by approximately 165% since 2011. GFPA, which is the Government Finance Officers Association, recommends a fund balance target of 10 to 15%. That's somewhat a basic target, and it's even more pronounced when you start looking at coastal communities like ours, which are prone to hurricanes and sea level rise and things of that nature. So I think currently, where our fund balance exists, the unassigned fund balance for that matter, which is essentially at $16 million, which represents 16.3% of our total general fund expenditures, is a big plus to the city as a whole. The next slide is somewhat difficult to view, but as you might be able to see from this chart, our millage rate has not changed dramatically over the years. Similarly, if you look at the debt millage, which is represented by the light brown portion of the graph, we've been fortunate to be able to keep our debt millage as a fairly small percentage of the total millage. If you notice the brownish section of the graph, it's relatively constant in terms of how much the total millage that it takes up. As of this day, the total estimated revenues is about $107.9 million. And a major component to the total estimate is the fact that the state, which is perennially linked with its revenue estimate, will be factored into this equation. And so the state revenue sharing, the half-sent sales tax, which makes up a good portion of our total revenue stream, those estimates will be provided early, later on in July, closer to August. But all in all, the depiction here of our revenue sources indicates that a significant amount of our total revenues are derived from taxes. The Eglor tax estimate is, the Eglor tax estimate is basically derived by taking our total tax collections and then subtracting the tax incremental revenue from our CRE As indicated here, as I've indicated earlier with the calculation of the tax revenues, the $41.8 million, which the property appraiser indicated about a $3 million increase, our preliminary estimate is close to that amount. And in July, I will go on a limb by saying by the end of this week, we do hope to get the final value from the property appraiser since the first falls on a weekend. So I would surmise by this Friday, we will be able to receive, we would have received the full value. The assessed, purely this didn't print out, but as indicated earlier, the assessed, average assessed value for the city is well below that of the county, and that was mentioned earlier as well. One major thing that I wanted to go over was, which was reviewed by the property appraiser, is the Florida additional home sit exemption. And this initiative, which will affect a significant portion of our tax revenues, the additional ballot post in which will be on the November ballot, as the property appraiser mentioned, 60% of the voters must approve the amendment. The Florida Association of Counties indicated that the impact would grow to $816.8 million by the fifth year. This is for the entire state. And one thing I want to preface is, the property appraiser indicated $350 for the average benefit to the homeowners, and the Florida Association of Counties has a slightly lower amount, and I suspect that's because they're looking at not only Deerfield, but they're looking at counties with smaller cost of living, such as Pope County, those counties further north of us, which aren't as populous. So again, this tax will not, the exemption will not apply to the school board portion of the tax bill. I have some quick examples here, because I know an often asked question is, will I qualify for the additional home sit exemption? The answer is, it depends. The additional home sit exemption, as the property appraiser stated, will apply to properties that are, that have eclipsed property values of between $100 and $125,000. How this works is, if my property value is exactly $100,000, I will not receive the additional, the third home sit exemption, which they call the super exemption. However, if my property value is, eclipses $125,000, I will be afforded the additional home sit exemption, which will give me $75,000 in total exemption. Another issue for us is the fact that our fire assessment fee is relatively small when compared to the remainder of the county. And if just one glance at the chart gives us some cause for concern. If you look at the average for the county, it's approximately $257. And it begs another question, are we providing fire service with garden hoses or, as compared to the other municipalities? No, we're not. And so when you look at all of the costs that accompanies a full-service fire rescue function, it kind of pushes us to the fact that in the upcoming year, we are afraid that we're going to have to take a good, solid look at the fire assessment rate structure to see if we're fully apportioning the costs to where they belong. In terms of the economic indicators, I'm just going to quickly go over our economic indicators. This is no major secret to everyone, the fact that the unemployment rate is low for both the city as well as the county. The state is hovering the same unemployment rate as the county, with some increase in consumer sentiment, as well as the median sales price of single-family homes. The number of closed sales, however, has decreased over the past year, and these figures represent May. The per capita income for the region has increased, and when you look at the overall economic well-being for the city, the gross retail sales, and this is 2016 numbers for the city, was $8.9 billion. However, only 1.3 billion of it was taxable. What that, putting that into perspective, since 2008, there have been a 33% increase in the gross retail sales, and the 2008, '09 were the height of the downturn in the economy. And with that said, I'm open for any questions that you might have.
Vice Mayor?
You would know that I have some questions for you. Let me deal with the, that tax first, because I have to be able to advise some people. And I'm so glad you did this tonight. Heard my voice, I'm trying to deal with this problem. But from what you said, the super, I'm calling the, the super exemption, the super exemption, if a homeowner, the value of the house is not more than $125,000, they will not be entitled to the super exemption.
That's correct.
Because people out there don't know this. Now, my question to you is, is there a cap?
Vice Mayor, I'm sorry. Not 125. If your value has to be at least $100,000.
$100,000. The value has to be at least $100,000. Now, is there a cap? $100,000 to what?
To 125.
To 125? So anybody over 125 would not be, would not be entitled to the super exemption either?
No, let me give you a solid example. Your, your home is worth $101,000. Your, your super exemption is going to be $1,000. So each $1,000 after $100,000, you're going to get that additional exemption. So your, your own value is $102,000, the super exemption is 2,000. And along the way, you're trying to get to 25,000. So if your home is valued at $400,000, you're going to get the full 25,000. And what that means is that these exemptions come into strata. The first, as the property appraiser mentioned, first, everyone gets an exemption for the first $25,000. But you have, your own value has to hit 50,000 for you to get an additional 25,000. So let's take, for instance, your home is valued at $30,000, your exemption is only $25,000. So even though, you have to hit certain levels. The first level is, everyone is exempt from the first $25,000 of property value. Then to get the addition, the second 25,000, your home has to be worth at least 50,000. And that's how it's done.
So if I'm lucky enough to live on the beachside and I got a piece of property that's valued at $750,000, I can only get up to $400,000 worth of exemption?
If you, if you live on the beach and your property is worth $750,000, then you get the full 75,000.
I get the full 75,000.
The first condition is, let's assume, you're, you're trying to say, what do I need to do to get the super exemption? The first question to ask yourself is, is my property worth more than $125,000? That's basically the, the rule of thumb. So if your property is not worth more than $125,000, you're not going to get the 75,000, assuming you don't qualify for any other type of exemption.
Right.
The senior, the veterans, and all of that.
So this applies to, will apply for those people that, for instance, well, let me back up. Will it apply for those people who have like two pieces of property? They can only get, I understand from Marty's thing, that you can only get homestead on one piece of property. So this particular super thing would also apply for that one, but not on that second property that you have?
Exactly. The second is only on your principal residence.
Okay. Okay.
Any other questions? Actually, Hugh, I have a question. You talked about bonded debt in the city. Does that include everything that's new that we've just?
No, the new one would be non-bonded debt. The bonded debt is the GOV.
Okay, perfect. Thank you.
And, 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 Mr. Mayor, if I may, what was that figure that you said for the bonded debt? You gave a percent?
It's $160 million. It's 2% of our assessed value.
Okay, thank you.
Which is $8 billion.
Which is what now?
$8 billion.
Okay, that's how we got the, okay, thank you.
And just to kind of preface, I know this presentation is done, but the additional home sit exemption will wipe out 10% of all homesteaded property. Of the 8 billion, 2 billion represents homesteaded property. Non-homesteaded represents, represented $6 billion. So our effect here for the additional home sit is going to be around $210 million is what we're going to lose in value.
Wow.
Hugh, can, Eddie, I don't know if you can do this, if we can go back to the slide that talks about the history of our military here in the city of Deerfield Beach. It's hard to read, I know.
History or comparison?
This one here, thank you. So back in 1990, we're at 5.5 was the, was the milit rate, we're at 6.5 now. You'll notice when it got low in 2008, 2009, to 5.3, 5.35. It was also, of course, it was convenient that that was, with an upcoming election coming along, I don't think that was a big surprise. But in 2008, the city had reached one of its highest points with our fund balance. It was at $23.4 million. Right after that, they lowered the milit rate, the market completely crashed, and we've been recovering from that ever since, essentially. These wide pendulum swings is why you don't sit there and play games and rape and pillage through your, your fund balance so you can start lowering your milit rate. You have to have a long game on this, and you have to look at what should be due, what could potentially happen to you when you start doing that. And that's what the history of Deerfield Beach has been. I've got numbers that go back to our fund balance to 2000, and you can see when they start playing games with the milit rate and doing these drastic cuts, and we tried to do that as well at one point. Quite frankly, we weren't in the, it wasn't the wise thing to do. So I encourage people who like to say that that's what we should be doing, to take a look at the overall long-range history of the city of Deerfield Beach. Right now, your milit rate is essentially what it was in 2000, 2001, 2003. Okay? So I'm always amazed when I hear some of these comparisons. If you look at the historical data for the history of the city of Deerfield Beach, it paints a different picture than what other people try to paint it to me. Thank you, Hugh, sorry for that.
Likewise. Thanks much, Hugh.
Just quickly, while we're preparing the next presentation about the department Just quickly, while we're preparing the next presentation about the Department of Financial Services, again, the expenditures that were, will be discussed over the next three nights, or two nights including tonight, actually will be part of my recommended expenditures. If the revenue estimates come in lower than current fiscal year, then some of these expenditures will have to be properly adjusted down. Not proposing a millage increase or decrease. I'm keeping all fees, including in our enterprise fund, flat. Additionally, within the strategic plan, when we talk about organizational capacity, these departments are there to support our operating departments that really their mission is to execute the, the strategic plan for the city. With organizational capacity, it's looking at our financial abilities, as well as our human resources and our information technology. And trying to make sure that those operating departments, whether it's public safety, which is not an in-house department, or environmental services, have the appropriate funds and the appropriate equipment and employees or contractual obligations to fulfill their service to the general public and to the businesses. So unless there's any questions about organizational capacity, I'll let Mr. Dunkley go over his expenditures in, for financial services.
Thanks, Mr. Manager. Mayor Gann, Vice Mayor, Commissioner Gann. It gives me great pleasure to, at this point, present what my department, Financial Services, what we do, what we plan to do for the future, and what we have done in the past. So without further ado, exactly what do we do? We account for all of the receipts and disbursements of the city. We manage the city's debt and investment portfolio. We prepare the CAFR and the budget. We oversee the business tax receipt program, formerly called the Occupational License Program. We oversee the parking authority. We handle utility customer service concerns. We prepare all federal, state, and local tax concerns. And we also do receivables management for the city. What exactly did we do last year, or this year actually, two thousand and eighteen? The, we, each year, I know that these first two items have come before you. And they represent the gold standard in financial reporting for state and local governments. And at times, we take it for granted. When I say we, I mean as a department. We assume that we're going to obtain this award. And the reason being is that there are some very detailed criteria which we have to follow. And I went back in nineteen ninety-seven to look at the CAFR when I started with the city. And I think the total number of pages were, I would say, give or take sixty-seven or so pages. Our CAFR now exceeds a hundred and something pages. And what that does, and what it's meant to be, is to kind of give more information to the readers of our CAFR, as well as our budget, as to where the city stands financially, and what we plan to do financially in the future. In terms of other accomplishments, we've received an upgraded bond rating from FIPS, uh, of double A. We've implemented the K4C preparation tool. And what that essentially is, is that in the past, we used to manually enter the information from our general ledger. And what the CAFR preparation tool does, it, it extracts or exports the data into another tool, which will decrease the preparation time for the CAFR. Also, we've issued forty-seven and a half million dollars in improvement revenue refunding bonds. We've created debt management and post-issues compliance policy. We've completed the city's overall accounting policies and procedures. We've updated the city's investment policies and procedures. And we've also initiated the testing phase of our lockbox conversion for utility bills. What the last, what the last item means is that we're hoping to reduce the foot traffic into City Hall. So in the very near future, when you receive your utility bills, we're going to, you're going to be able to remit your payments through, to a lockbox, which will increase the time that is, it decreases time that it is deposited into the city's bank account, as well as decrease the amount of patrons coming to City Hall to pay their bills. I will discuss the utilization of e-bills later on in my performance measures. Our priorities for the upcoming year is the fact that, and, and I have to somewhat, if you would bear with me for a moment, with this first item, and our conversion to the new accounting software, One Solution, I'd be the first to say that it was a failed and organic experiment. Because we were actually hoping for big things from our existing software vendor. What we ended up finding was that the software was not as mature as we had hoped. There were some bugs and some fixes that needed to have been done, which significantly affected our ability to, to bring about or create decision usefulness with our financial data. So what our goal is in the upcoming year is to explore just getting a new accounting software, which will enable us to export data to meet public records requests, demands, much faster. And to also to meet our recording demands, both internal and external, external, much faster. Next year, we plan to implement our utilities customer service interactive voice response system. And what that is, is simply, you'll be able to call in, pay by phone. You'll be able to interactively obtain your account balance and do things to kind of eliminate some of the human intervention factor. We plan to explore the conversion to the tax bill collection method for our residential garbage bill. And please note I say explore, because any new initiative that we take with billing our residential garbage bill will invariably come before you for your approval. We'll be performing a full update of the study of the fire assessment fee, which I indicated earlier. We'll be revising the rate structure for beach parking permits. Currently, we have a very reasonable rate of a hundred dollars per calendar year for our beach parking permit. We think that this rate could be revised somewhat to meet the current demands of pricing for parking services on the beach. We would look at peak demand pricing, in example, weekends and holidays. We'd also take a look at charging a convenience fee, not so much a convenience fee, but a, a minimum usage for parking. For instance, a lot of our neighboring communities have a minimum of one to two hours parking. So what that means for us is, if you're utilizing the credit card method of payment, the city does have to pay a credit card merchant processing fee, which I'll touch upon later, which this fee is a cost that the city currently bears. And we try, for the most part, to build that into our pricing structure. We also would like to eliminate some of the permit-only parking. There are currently thirty-six spots that are designated for permit-only parking. What that does, it will help to alleviate some of the parking demand pressures that we currently have with seeing our beach patrons driving around so to get adequate parking. In terms of the performance measures, the first two I've gone over with the GFOS award program. The third is the fact that the ability to prepare the CAFR prior to the GFOS deadline. This has been somewhat of an often discussed topic. And with the CAFR preparation tool of K4C, as well as the fact that we have just added a chief accounting officer, we feel that we'll no doubt be able to, to meet this deadline for the CAFR preparation. The, the next metric is a bond rating. And it appears that it's somewhat trite, but a double A rating is, is not had by a lot of municipalities. And we are very fortunate, and we feel very honored to have been able to have this rating. The percentage of utility bills, we do hope to increase that. It's a slight increase, but in the upcoming year, our goal is to push for an even greater increase. We didn't want to overstate our bounds, because we know some customers like the actual bills so that they can touch and feel and remit the, the remittances portion to our lockbox. But what we're trying to do is to go digital, and paperless rather, as the manager would often say. And to kind of move the customer into the new digital divide. The number of payroll checks, direct deposit vouchers processed, that is a steady. And in terms of the direct deposit utilization rate, it's about ninety to ninety-one percent. We, if we had to choose, we would increase it to a hundred percent. But that is, is, is a more personal choice for some employees. Some employers use what they call pay cards, which they force the employees to, to have a direct deposit. And if, if you do not have or want a, an actual paper check, they say, okay, we're going to issue you a pay card, and we're going to simply direct deposit all of your paychecks onto this card. We don't see ourselves moving to that point just yet. So the direct deposit utilization rate, we foresee to increase slightly. The number of parking tickets issued, we do think that it's been trending up. And the second metric is the number of parking tickets voided. We would kind of want to see somewhat of a proportional increase there. However, what our goal is for next year is to minimize the number of tickets voided so that we, we would in turn increase the revenue. The business tax receipts issued, the new business tax receipts issued, as well as renewals, are somewhat reflected here. And with the last metric, I just wanted to simply state that we would like to start tracking the public records requests that we receive, because this siphons a considerable amount of staff, time, and effort. And our department is a very, very task-specific department. We have, every day, we have, or actually for the year, we have about a hundred and sixty million dollars that comes through, be it flowing in or out of the city's coffers, which we have to account for. So every time that we have to stop accounting for the city's finances, to go look for what was the last fifty checks we paid to Joe Schimow, contractor, or someone makes a public record, records request of, give me your, the monthly reports for the past fifty years. It takes time, and I know I'm over-exaggerating, but it takes staff time for us to research this. And we, we try to, 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 to please the citizen. But sometimes I must state, we get records requests that take a considerable amount of time to fulfill. And as such, we're hoping to track this metric in the upcoming year. Our personnel, we remain static for the most part, with a little bit over twenty employees. And in terms of our budget, we don't have much of any increase in the budget. Our major increases for the finance division is a hundred thousand dollars of the increase pertains to the new GL software in the parking authority. We will be bidding out the merchant service fees as well, as exploring other options, such as one-hour minimums, what I've indicated for usage of the credit card. Last year, there were approximately eight hundred thousand transactions for the usage of the pay-and-display parking. With that said, I'm open for any questions that you might have.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Please, yes, just quickly. One, within his personnel, you will notice that the budgeting division within his department will be extracted and become its own standalone department, which will not result in any increases in expenses. The division, standalone division, will still report to Mr. Dunkley, but will be, have a direct link into the city manager's office. And reason being is for checks and balances, I feel that it should not be within a department. It should be its own, and that's fairly common. Some cities actually have it in the city manager's department. Certainly, if you look at state or federal government, there's usually an office of management and budget. So we will be creating a standalone division, but it will result in, in no cost increase. Additionally, you know, our goal, of course, is to try to cut down on, on the number of public records requests that we process. And one of the areas that we hope to do that is by putting most of the information on our city website and through the city clerk's office, along with our information technology services department. We'll be bringing a new module in effect sometime in fiscal year nineteen that will begin migrating that information onto the website. Clearly, it's not going to happen overnight, but it will happen relatively quickly. And we feel that's one of the best ways to be transparent and provide information to the public. The other area that I think we need to discuss is about the parking that Mr. Dunkley spoke about. We, we are seeing, if you go to the beach on a Saturday or Sunday, you'll see all the spaces are pretty much taken up. But the designated beach sticker parking, there might be a few spots. So we really want to look at cutting the number of those, and then certainly look at a rate increase for our, our beach parking, because it is a commodity right now. And looking into the future, though, we should be prepared that, that revenue flow, which is, what is it for this, projected for this?
Two point six million dollars.
Thanks. You know, eventually with Uber and with other types of transportation that will be coming more prevalent in South Florida, that number will probably go down. And just lastly, dealing with the, the software, we're looking for a more robust financial software program that will allow better analytics for not only staff, but even for the city commission to make decisions. And the current software provider that we have, Superioron, that we've had for several decades, it's time that we make a change and, and move in that direction. However, I would not categorize it as a failure. Failure would mean that it's not- Failure would mean that it's not doing what it's supposed to do. Unfortunately, it's not doing the enhancements that we expect and would like to see, and therefore, we're making a recommendation to change that software. So with that, is there anything I forgot about future considerations for beyond fiscal year nineteen? Thanks.
Mr. Dunkley, did we complete accounting policies in the procedures manual?
Yes, we did, Mayor.
Okay. Did we implement employee cell service platform for payroll checks?
That is, it's actually a perfect question. That was accompanied the new software, which we did not.
Okay. Did we obtain GFOS Excellence Financial Reporting Distinguished Budget Presentation Award?
Yes.
Okay. Implement a pay-by-phone option for utility customers?
That's the IVR, which is the two-thousand-nineteen priorities.
We didn't...
Interactive Voice Response.
We didn't do that last year, though, did we?
We didn't.
Okay. Implement Wells Fargo Safe Vantage for currency and coins?
No, we just implemented the first half of the program, which is called Remote Deposit Capture, which significantly reduced, in the budget, is going to reduce our daily pickup for armored vehicle service by approximately, we're paying eight hundred dollars per month, and that's going to be decreased to four hundred dollars.
Okay, so we're a hundred, we're halfway there.
Where we are.
Okay. What about, did we implement program for false alarm billing and collection?
The false alarm program, what happened was, it's currently dormant. We do plan to bring before you, we have to somewhat rework the current ordinance because the current ordinance, we felt, was somewhat punitive to the property owner.
Right.
And so we want to eliminate some of those penalties and to make it more palatable to the property owners before we bring the program back into full stride.
Okay. So we had seven goals for your department last year, major goals, and I'm going directly from the budget, and that's why I'm looking at it. One of them, I agree with the false alarm billing, that was tricky because we did have to make some changes in what we were attempting to do, plus with some technology changes. It really wasn't capturing what we were supposed to, so I can understand eliminating that. The, getting partially there on the Wells Fargo Safe Vantage, I guess is good, but that leaves us with, so that's a total, or one of them, that gives us six goals, and we're only at a fifty percent success rate on our six goals. So I would hope that whatever our goals are this upcoming year includes the ones that we didn't implement, unless there's something drastic that says they shouldn't be included. And then whatever new goals we also have.
I agree. I agree. And that's why you see in the nineteen priorities, we doubled back and we said, okay, we're going to the Safe Vantage as well as the Interactive Voice Response. We go back and we pull those which we have not fully implemented, and from year to year, whichever ones we didn't, we definitely will push them in the upcoming year. We never forget about any of them, as you indicated, with the pay-by-phone.
Right.
That's on the top of our list for this year.
Okay. The other thing is, has customer service always been in this department?
Yes.
Okay. And where does that show up in our budget, books?
It's in utilities.
Okay.
Yes, it's in the utility.
So, so we're looking at a proposed eight percent increase in that department?
Customer service, a slight decrease.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yes, a slight decrease.
Customer service, I'm looking at overall for the financial services.
Yes, you are.
Eight percent. And that is accounted for, and what exactly is the eight percent coming, where's that coming from?
The eight percent, a hundred thousand, is for the accounting software, which we're going to split, it's actually two hundred thousand per year, which we're going to split with the enterprise fund. The remaining hundred thousand essentially represents around five percent, which two, we budgeted, the average of two percent cola, two-and-a-half percent cola.
Sure.
And two percent married, which will make up the remainder.
Okay.
Yes.
Great. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Commissioner Collins, questions?
Very quickly, Mr. Dunkley, on those citizens' requests, have you calculated the amount of money we used on those, filling those seventy or sixty requests?
Yes, we have one, as a matter of fact, just to give you a good example, one requesting monthly reports for five years, which the report was significant amounts of pages, which we gave the quote of eight hundred dollars, which the requester has not yet responded. And so a good amount of the requests are somewhat labor and time-intensive, and I'm not going to throw any other department out there. It's not asking for, say, a blueprint. Most of the questions are, some are laced with questions that we have to first decipher. We have to reach out to legal to determine, are these questions or are these requests for records? And so a lot of the requests for records are somewhat, one that we received just recently was asking for all of the individuals that were present on Fridays at City Hall. And so it's not asking for a record. So how do we extrapolate that data? First, we have to say, who is present? Do they have a lead form? So it's a lot of iteration that goes into fulfilling our public records request, which we feel that it's a considerable burden on staff. And the requests, to be frank with you, are only coming from a few citizens, and they appear to be somewhat meant to, and we can't interpret what they mean, but the pattern of behavior for the requests is just troubling in terms of trying to keep the city's finances, to keep the city's accounting in order, and then we have to drop. As I had mentioned, we gladly accept the opportunity to tell of what we do on a daily basis because some individuals just think that we, they see the cashiers and they feel that's all that's done. But we do debt investments, we file grant reports. It's a multiplicity of things that we do that is not obvious to the citizens' naked eyes. And so I just want to put that out there, that, and that's why we are tracking this metric.
It may seem small at this particular point in time, but as the city grows, that could wreak havoc on our finances, basically. I am concerned about that, and I would like to see, when you get those types of requests properly, a quarterly report on what it took us, or how much money it took us to fulfill those requests. And in addition to that, then, I know that people put, some people put it in frivolous requests, and when they get a bill, they don't pay. What are we doing to capture those funds, one way or the other? And I say that because I probably have had more ethics violations filed against me. And I know you got a whole lot of requests for documents and data or whatever, and they all came back negative, one way or the other. But, and nobody ever tells us what it took for us to answer all of that. And that's money that's coming out of our coffers that we have to pay, that we collect citizens' taxes, and we have to pay it from the city. So it would be nice if we could get an accounting of, you know, those funds, exactly what it takes to do that.
I wouldn't refer to the city attorney or the city clerk. I'm just a deed collector.
Fine. And I'm going to say the same thing to the clerk when she come, because she gets a lot of those requests, one way or the other. But in terms of dollar amount, I would like to see that dollar amount, even from the, if a person touches a paper one time, how much is that costing us for that person to touch that paper? Not that, I'm not going to be that petty. But there's a process that we have to go through, and I think that we need to know exactly what we are expending on these requests, some of them which may be frivolous and some of them not.
I, I mean, just not to prolong the agony, and I don't want to kind of self-promote, but, and I know, though, the mayor is looking at the agenda at the time, but I've spent countless weekends trying to figure out if something is a public records request or if it's a question. And just this past weekend, I've had close to upwards of thirty questions from citizens asking, then we have to decipher, is this a question or public records request? And it, not only, it really chews into your ability to effectively perform your task, and you end up essentially just wondering, but...
Yeah, and you're on the job, you know, and you should, if we had to pay you for that, I'm glad you're doing it on your off time, but if we had to pay you for that, I want to know what that cost would have been, one way or the other.
I don't, I think the manager wouldn't approve your overtime, but I thank you much for your...
Unfortunately, Hugh, you don't get overtime. Could I just address that really quick?
Sure.
We'll certainly work on providing that to the city commission. I'll work with Ms. Giliard and Mr. Santucci on that. However, I think that one of the easiest, easiest solutions for us will be just to put as much information as we possibly can on the website and just redirect them, or they can do their own research within the website, and that's going to be the best way because, you know, and one thing I want to make clear is that, you know, we do have an obligation to provide public records. I understand what you're talking about, so not going to sit here and say, we're going to try to not provide those. We're just going to try to provide it in a way that takes the burden off of staff and just makes it easy.
Exactly.
So no one can even question whether or not we provided it, so, but we will work on that for you, Vice Mayor.
I appreciate it.
I have a question on this, if I may. Could we not design a form through the legal department as specifically what is legally a records request and what is a question? If we had such a form and it were online, or we made it available to people, wouldn't that take away the dilemma of what is a question and what is an actual request for a specific record?
Just quickly before Mr. Soroka answers, so we certainly, for the most part, can differentiate between a question and a public record. It just becomes, there's some gray area where someone may ask for a document but not ask for the right document, and it becomes a guessing game, and that's where it becomes an issue. But we certainly, we do trainings throughout the year coordinated by the city clerk's office, along with the city attorney's office for staff on how they should fulfill public records requests, what is a public record request, what is not. So we do have, I think, some level, maybe not a written document that you're speaking of, but that's certainly something we can also review. Mr. Soroka?
Yeah, sure. Thank you for the question. The short answer is yes, we can design a form. However, under law, we actually can't require requesters to submit their request pursuant to our form. As to your question about, or the issue about a question versus a public record request, there's no obligation under Florida's public record law to answer a question in response to a public record request. However, when those questions come in and our office is called, our guidance is to do the best we can in providing a document that responds to the question that's being answered, or the question that's being asked. So if there is a document that answers the question, we would directly respond by providing such document. If you have any follow-up questions?
That's fine. In your case, is it the same people's?
Any other questions? I just have, I'm sorry, Hugh, just real quick.
That's a method.
When you talked about our credit card processing fee with our meter parking, are we looking at raising the minimum hourly on there so that way we're not, because if you go to a restaurant and places, they'll say, the minimum credit card charge is this amount. We're looking to recoup the credit card processing fee, right?
We, we were thinking actually, Mayor, just the minimum, say, one hour.
Right.
Exactly. Not that it's a minimum hourly, but...
How much is, how much is it now?
It's two dollars per hour for the most part, three dollars.
But what's the minimum per hour? You can put it for just an hour or two hours?
It's fractional.
That's fractional?
Yeah.
Well, that makes sense.
So that's what you're looking to change?
Exactly.
Make sure we can recoup our credit card. Somebody comes in and goes, I want fifteen minutes, and we're losing on that.
We are.
Okay. So the other, I would rather see that because I don't want to see us raising our meter rates at all, or again. And eliminate, elimination of the permit, the beach stickers or their spaces, I am not, and I'm saying this just because we're all here, I have no inclination in doing that. I have no desire to do that. I've been here long enough and seen that go back and forth. For the few things, yes, it's a really good deal for the residents, let's keep it that way. And the, so, but you are trying, because you are looking at a parking permit increase and a potential elimination of spaces?
Yes.
Okay.
And the elimination of space, we totally get your point.
Okay. And the, and the rate increase as well, just so you know. All right. Thank you.
Not a problem.
Okay. Commissioner Drosky?
Different topic. Excuse me. The CAFER? You mentioned that there was software to help you, you know, put it together more efficiently. Is that correct? Would that allow you to release the CAFER earlier than it currently is?
If, the deadline, unless you receive an extension from GFOS, is March 31st. Last year, as in the previous two or so years, we had to implement GASB, what they call GASB sixty-seven and sixty-eight, which we had to receive information from the state. The elected officials are members of the FRS, and so we had to get their, our proportionate share of the pension plan expenses and all of the information that goes into that. So to answer your question, yes, the CAFER prep software will assist us in doing our part, but if there's a third party that we're relying on, we typically will put forward a request for extension to GFOS and indurize its, its valid request. They normally, they usually know when we have a busy year of GASB implementation, such as sixty-seven and sixty-eight.
So other than the FRS, is there other information that the city waits for to complete the CAFER?
We wait for the third-party pension auditors. We, for the past several years, we've received those well into March, and that is...
Police and fires?
Police, fire, and then uniform. We've received those excessively late, and to, we don't want to hear anyone out there, but they changed, the firm, for the auditors for the fire plan got, their accounting firm got purchased by a firm that was not as, their expertise was not in pension, so they had to reach out to the predecessor auditor for some assistance. So there are a lot of variables that go into what made whole of the CAFER, but to get to what you're asking, our goal is to finish well before March 31st, which is the deadline.
Is there anything that the city can do to proactively get this information that we're not already doing, or are we at the mercy of them, providing information to us what we get?
Good point. The manager has even asked that, and he's brought up the point of writing the pension board. On several occasions, we've been brought to the brink of doing so, but we have a fairly amicable relationship with them, and we reach out to them to try and coax them into moving a bit faster. But over the years, we would say that we, we have such a relationship, we would go and say, look here, we have the issue, can you speed it up? They normally would tell us what the issue is. GASB sixty-seven and sixty-eight for the other year. One year was on fair value of investments. The third-party custodian placed a value on all of their investments. And the way how it works is, the third-party custodian is what values the investment. They use a service such as Clearwater Analytics, which is a stock securities valuation company. So when they get the value, auditors came in and say, look here, we don't agree with these values. So they had to go back and revalue all of the securities we held us up. So it's a multiplicity of factors that go into the CAFER. And so, but, but all in all, we tried to finish it before March 31st.
I would just say, if you foresee or anticipate any delays, what information that the city isn't receiving to maybe let the commission and the public know, and that way, instead of the darts being thrown at us or... of the darts being thrown at us or you, they can be thrown in the appropriate direction.
I I agree and I think we could definitely do that in the future. Thanks for that.
Ms. Mayor Gaines?
Yes.
Sorry, just before we get off that subject, just for the benefit of the public or even any new commissioners, can you please explain what GASB is and why it's important that we comply?
GASB is a standard setting body for governmental accounting and if we do not apply GASB's standards, what the auditors will do is in their audit report, they say that we're auditing your financials based on, excuse me, generally accepted accounting standards. And if you don't follow it, they will give you what's called a qualified report. That means you didn't follow the prescribed standards and so your report will not be a clean report, as they call it. What it does is whenever you issue bonds or you do anything to the third party investment community or the credit facility community, banks and what have you, they look down on that because their thing is that the city is not presenting its financial statements in a way that's comparable to other governments and that's a big hit on any city that doesn't do that is considered, they will not give you a clean audit opinion and it's a big issue to be able to have a clean audit opinion.
May I answer your questions?
Yes, thank you.
Thanks.
And I thank you likewise.
Thank you very much.
Our Department of Information Technology Services and I'd like to formally introduce our new chief information officer, Mr. Ron McKenzie, who recently joined the city.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Commission. Appreciate, thank you for having me here to present and give you the opportunity to learn a little bit more about information technology and what we do. The Information Technology Services Department is responsible for three key things, automation, integration, and innovation. These tools are used by the various city departments to provide excellent services to our constituents. Our goal is to provide the services and systems that increase efficiency resulting in making tribe members better workers. We even have a goal in the department. Our goal or our motto is we help you do what you do better. What do we do? Many things. Network infrastructure, security and data sharing devices or services, geographic information systems, which is GIS, mapping, data mapping, analysis, backup and restore, desktop and peripheral peripheral support, email and electronic records retention, enterprise resource planning application support, cloud computing, localized server, mobile workforce support, web and app module development and administration. Some of the other things that we do that people don't know is IT services also responsible for access control, the badges, AV systems and the cameras throughout the city. Some of our fiscal 18 achievements, one of the major goals was to extend mobile workforce. The goal is, I like the topic or I call it everywhereness. We want to be able to provide mobile devices so that people can work from everywhere. Not only mobile devices, I'll talk a little bit more later about also applications. So that way, if there's, let's say, an anthrax type of threat in one building and people can't come in, we should still be able to have them work because they'll have a laptop and if you've got internet access, you can work. So we want you to be able to work from everywhere. So that's what everywhereness is about. One of the achievements we have is extending that mobile workforce. We have more sites with internet access and we also have more mobile device users. Another achievement for fiscal 18 was we deployed SharePoint. And you may say, what's the SharePoint thing? SharePoint is a citywide intranet and that's an internal internet type site that we use. It's a great collaboration tool. It allows people to put calendars and share calendars and share documents and share contacts and various other things and also not only within your department, but amongst departments. It's also been used and we've got a great advocate in HR to put policies and to put forms and everything like that. So we all have that internal and so that's what SharePoint is. We've also extended access to GIS resources through Esri online platform. So we've taken our goal is to take as much as we can to the cloud. By taking things to the cloud, it allows various different and what's the cloud, right? The cloud, the cloud is a figurative type area where various different companies have backup and main data centers all over the place and they have virtual servers all over the place. So if one system goes down or one place goes down, you still have all your data up in another location. And so it creates security and allows you that everywhereness to be able to operate. That's our philosophy, to try to go to do more in the cloud and allow you to have that access. So as long as you have internet access, you can access it and we've done the same thing with GIS. We've also worked with HR to deploy NeoGov for employee recruitment and selection. And we deployed BOSS Desk Service, Desk Solution with integrated change management. And what change management does, change management allows us to, when a change happens, there was an audit that was done and it said we didn't have these processes, so now we have them. You're able to have a backup plan. You're also able to communicate to all the people that the change is going to take place on, what change, what that change is going to be and you get buy-in before that change happens. You also have the steps that are going to be taken for those and that date that it happened. So when an audit comes, if they say, okay, listen, when did you change from one software to another or one upgrade to another, we're able to say that and we can show a backup plan and so on and so forth. So that change management strategy was something that we procured when we procured BOSS Desk. IT services continues to expand DFB Tribe Services through automation and integration. The city will deploy an interactive voice response system and that seems to be a big topic, that IVR from finance or whatever, and we still plan to deploy that IVR system, which is one of the AI type devices, which provides artificial intelligence to constituents for utility billing. The city is actively seeking to deploy other methods of artificial intelligence, as the manager stated when he started, talking about the various different ways and I'll allude to that shortly, in innovative and, excuse me, in efforts to be an innovative leader in government services. Now, one of the things that you hear frequently is about cybersecurity and you may wonder what we're doing to try to prevent and protect us from cybersecurity. These are some of those things. I spoke before about a philosophy to do more in the cloud and take more applications into cloud to make sure that we've got redundancy. We've deployed Office 365 and the man to the right of me is one of the gurus who deployed email, what the email in the cloud, that's A. We also have the Esri or RTIS in the cloud, the man to my left, my right, left hand man. And as I talked about before, NeoGov. The city had already taken advantage of some of the techniques of doing something in some of the applications in the cloud and already had Ventec and RecTrack. So that's the parks, that's HR. So the philosophy to do more in the cloud is being played upon and now more people are coming on board. You may also have heard about Atlanta where they had ransomware and was holding the city hostage and they paid a whole lot of money in other locations and I'm sure you want to make sure that does not happen for us. And so my goal of course is to make sure it doesn't happen on my watch. Some of the things that we're doing to try to make sure that that does not happen is backups because that's one of the key things, right? If you've got your data backed up, then if somebody takes over one, you've still got it some other place. So we're trying to make sure we have proper backups and that backup technology to make sure that things happen right. We also have antivirus software and Proofpoint and I know you probably have things to say about Proofpoint because it tells you about eight o'clock every morning, you get that email, you're like, oh, how come my email didn't come through? Because we're checking to make sure that when it comes through, it's right and that you approve it. Our plans for fiscal 2019, next generation firewalls. What's a next generation firewall? Firewalls pretty much stop intruders from coming from the outside in. Next generation firewall stop also people from the inside going out and that's usually how viruses and worms happen. It doesn't actually happen from the person outside, they force you to click on something or to do something. And next generation firewall search to try to find out what's happening and try to stop that before it happens. In that same boat, best of breed software for departments and that's what the manager was talking about. One of the keys that we're looking at this year is to look at best of breed. By best of breed, we don't mean obviously spending money in any way, shape or form, but to find the best software for particular departments. We realize as we talked about one solution, that it's hard to have one solution, one thing that works great for everything. So what we're doing now is to find specificity. So we're trying to find specific software and be able to implement that specific software for those departments and then integrate it. That software will provide some of the things that you spoke about before, Mayor, with the analytics and everything like that, to be able to do that. And I'll show you, we have some software, as a matter of fact, in IT now that allows us that specific software to do some of that tracking and we can do it now and we can do it quarterly or monthly or however that needs to happen, but we're going to try to make sure that we roll out the same type of software throughout the city to make sure others are able to take advantage. It may not be the same software, but software that does that, that's able, that you're able to take care of analytics. Phishing software. So you see phishing and I just want you to know, it's not like I spoke earlier to one of the commissioners who spoke about going fishing and he's a big fisherman. It's not that kind of fishing, sir. This particular phishing is, you probably have had emails from your friends telling you, listen, did you send me this email? And it says all types of stuff or click on this link or you just want something from Bank of America, you know, like I didn't send you an email. That's phishing. They spoof your name, they spoof and make it look like it's you and they try to send it to someone who who is in your contact list and then you think it's a legitimate email. But what it asks you to do usually is to click and then enter information, social security information, bank account information, all types of personal information. And they're able to get various information from you and basically hurt you as an individual and in this case, hurt us as a city. So phishing software is something that we're going to be investing in and once we get the software, we'll be deploying the software to make sure that we are, and I'll talk later about training, which is the next one, we're going to train to make sure that you're alert about it, but then also to see who would fall for that mistake, who was going to click on that thing and see what's happening. So if you get an email and you click and it happens and IT sends you something and says, you got to go through training, no offense, we just try to make sure everybody stays. That's all I'm saying. Okay? Training. One of the key elements also, of course, as we deploy things, there's a lot of software we talked about, a lot of different things that are going on and so obviously in accordance with that is training. You can't actually roll something out without training people how to use it properly. So a great emphasis is going to be placed on training. And professional services. One thing about IT is that IT has very specific skill sets and everyone does not have that skill set. One of the things I talked about with cybersecurity, one of the things that we're going to do for professional services is to get, or one of the things that we propose, I'm sorry, is to get a cybersecurity company to come and analyze and look at our entire environment and then give us any holes that we may have, but if not, also to tell us how to safeguard it to make sure that we do things and hopefully even to have a continual type contract to make sure that we're always safeguarded. There are other things that we have when it comes to professional services. One thing about, like I said, about IT, if we need someone with a specific skill or specific software, that may not be internal, we may not have that. So frequently, we may have to go out to find that specific person to do that, especially as I talk about integrating some of these best of breed products. It's a product from A and a product maybe from C and we may not have that skill set. So we have to find someone who has that skill set in order to integrate agency. So you will see professional services and the manager I spoke about, you know, having more professional services money so that we can make sure these things happen. IT services will seek professional services, I speak about, right, for cybersecurity to evaluate the city, advise of any weaknesses we have and to help develop policies. We will also attend government seminars and conferences focused on cybersecurity and safeguarding our country and our city against cyber attacks. Some of the metrics that we have in our department, we have some that were estimated for fiscal 18 and some that are targeted for fiscal 19. You can see the estimated money, as far as financial, the 2.0, 2 billion, 23,003 dollars that was estimated for fiscal 18 and a slight increase of about 200,000 for next year. You also see the percentage of workforce mobilized. I spoke before about the everywhereness and trying to get more mobile tech, mobile workers. But one of the things in that story, it says only seven percent that you see from 48% to 55% of more mobility. But the story is, if you can also look down two lines where it says the number of workstations. We have from 390 workstations to 420 workstations. So there'll be more workstations that are going out there. So 55% obviously of 420 is a whole lot more as we talk about, as opposed to 48% of 390 it's about. So it's not exactly seven percent of 40 of this 390, it's 55% of that, so that's how it goes. Virtualized service, that's also another thing, a smaller workspace, you can do more in one server than you can in 10 servers and we're in that thing, we've got 19 now non-virtualized servers. We look to at least reduce that by one for next year and then the number of virtualized servers will be increased. The number of fiber locations will also be increased and we are increasing it by four. The four sites that we're looking to increase the fiber locations are Hillsborough Community Center, Highlands Park, Teen Center and Ocean Rescue. Other performance measurements. This is in the world of GIS. In the world of GIS, we have applications that are internal, so applications that are used by utility or CRA are not able to be seen, it's used internally by the guys and their iPads and they're not able to be seen by the people externally. But we have 11 very, very rich applications that we have for the public to use. We spoke before, the county appraiser came and he talked about property and he talked about value and everything like that. But one of the things when you're going to look to do something in Deerfield Beach, one of the keys in looking for real estate is what? Location, location, location and finding out the information at location. That's where GIS comes in. GIS is able to tell you, again, excuse me, tax information, but it's also able to tell you about churches, excuse me, not churches, to tell you about hospitals and tell you about schools and to tell you about parks and to tell you what time the parks close and to tell you what amenities are in the parks and to tell you about when the garbage pickup is. All of these type things are available right now for residents and for others, for real estate people, when they're looking at Deerfield Beach. Also vacant properties. So there's a lot of information that we have right now in our 11 very rich applications. I also want to tell you about one other application that I really like that we developed this year. There's an application that's a snapshot of how the city looked in 1957 and it's overlaid also now. So if you scale back, it doesn't go through, doesn't tell you like 1957, 58, so on and so forth, but you can scale back and see what it looked like in 57, 61 years ago and what it looks like now and it's pretty amazing. So if you get an opportunity, please check out the app, I'm sure you'll like it. It also speaks to the amount of data sets that we have here, EOC data sets. And on the bottom, we talked about training classes. I mentioned before, there's going to be a lot of software and a lot of things that are happening. So we're going to increase the amount of training that's going on. We've already started some training classes, we had classes for SharePoint and as we roll out other applications, obviously, as I said, there will be a whole lot more training. So that's going to be a metric that we look at and say, okay, next year you'll be able to say, how many classes do we have? And I'll be able to provide that answer. Some of the new metrics that we have for next year, currently, we had a system that was called Trakit and that system was able to track the amount of incidents, but not incidents by type. So if there was a GIS incident or a software incident or hardware incident, we didn't, we weren't able to track it, we just knew it was a certain amount of incidents. And so in 2008, the estimate was 2802, the number of incidents, 2,802, and you can see the numbers reduced, obviously, because we've got more efficiency and we want to be able to provide information and do things a lot better. And I'll show you a short moment, how we now are able to check on incidents, how things have evolved with the new software that we have. Another metric that we have is a percent of incidents resolved within 48 hours. And you may say, oh, that's a small number next year, 50%. But it's because now with the new system, the way that we've also applied being able to close out a ticket, so if you call with an incident, we'll solve the incident, but we don't just close out the incident after we solve it. You have to then come back and tell us that it's solved and so therefore that takes a little bit more than our SLA that we have for 48 hours. Next year, it may be 50%, but we're hoping that once the pattern continues and people understand the process and how we do it, obviously that number will increase, so we'll be able to close more issues within 48 hours. Other metrics that we have that we're looking at is the number of requests, that's can you buy a new computer, can you do this, request is a little bit different from an incident, the number of major outages, one that we hope that stays zero forever and ever is the number of data breaches and then the number of scheduled outages. This is a chart or a pie chart showing the number of incidents. Now, the software that we have, we've only had for two months. So this particular pie chart that you see does not actively reflect what happened for a year, but next year it will. So this will tell us whether it's a hardware incident, a software incident, GIS, mobile incident, network incident. What's important about that data? If there's a lot of hardware incidents, let's say it's 50%, then that may mean the device that we're deploying, that we're trying to be more mobile with, is not a good one. So we may need to look in another direction. If there are software problems or application incidents, then we look to see whether it's a training incident and they need to train more on the software or if the software is not a great software and something else that we need to look at. But having this type of data and this type of metrics allows you to make an educated, not, excuse me, an analytic and educated analysis of the issue and then try to resolve that problem. This is a copy of the proposed budget for fiscal 19 and the five areas that are in yellow are the changes and I'll speak to each one of those changes on the next couple of slides. On the top, there is a staff enhancement of two, increased automation and the, because of the Department of Environmental Services, they are also increasing automation. are also increasing automation, they're going to have automatic meter reading, et cetera, and a lot more software, they want to be able to have more so that when those guys have those iPads, they can see more about the drainage, and the power, and the sewage, and all that kind of good stuff. And so it's going to take more support for us to give to them to make sure that things are there. The need for that is to have one more technology integrator and one more GIS specialist. And as you can see, this will be funded through the utility fund, not through general funds. The other change that you see is, we have, once we get that, we'll still have two technology innovators, but when that happens, we said, okay, listen, well, one of the technology innovator positions may be better if we do something a little bit different. The thing that we wanted to do a little bit different is we wanted to try to partner with one of the higher education learning institutes, one of the college universities, to bring in some young, fresh minds. The manager spoke about the change in technology and all of the, and artificial intelligence, and the fact that people will have to be educated in order to move forward and to be ready for it, and we need to be ready for it. So we need to bring those young minds here, and we also want to also be kind of a breeding ground, right, to make sure that people say, okay, listen, we're preparing them for the future. So in doing so, we propose to have three paid, part-time interns, and that, as I said, is going to replace that one technology integrator. And the technology integrator position is fifty-one thousand annually. This, obviously, we're going to pay them ten dollars an hour, I've proposed to pay them ten dollars an hour, and the cost will be thirty-two thousand four hundred dollars. As I said, the goal is to partner with higher education learning institutes to train our future leaders and prepare them for future time, uh, future full-time employment and workforce after graduation. The other key to that is, I know it works. One of the keys is, once you come to Deerfield Beach and you become a member of the tribe, even for a short time, you get a little taste, you want more. Case in point, to my left is Sean Perigord. Sean was an intern, and after being an intern, Sean said, listen, I want to help with the continual improvement that's happening at Deerfield Beach. Sean came on, competed, was hired, and Sean has been here for almost five years. Another case in point, once you get a taste of Deerfield Beach and become a part of the mem, a member of the tribe, you don't want to leave, you want to stay and help improve. To my right, Mr. Eddie Martinez. Mr. Eddie Martinez was a consultant for about two years, and after two years, he was like, this is where I want to be. I got a taste of being a member of the pro, of the tribe, this is what I want. And another case of that, yours truly, Ron McKenzie. I was a consultant for about a year, a little bit over a year, and I got a taste of what it was like to be a member of the tribe, and competed against over two hundred and six people, is that about right, Burgess?
I believe it was two hundred and thirty.
Give or take twenty-five and thirty. But I competed against him because I wanted to be a member, and wound up winning out to be here, and I'm happy that I'm here. The manager spoke in detail about us making sure that we are going to be one of the leading municipalities when it comes to technology, we don't want to fall behind, and so therefore, you will be seeing various things coming to your desk to make sure that we are prepared for the future. This slide shows you the future, and the future is now. The first picture shows you man shaking hand with machine, and that's just a virtual thing. As it says, when you go now to pay for gas, a machine comes and tells you, hello? It talks to you usually, there's a little machine that tells you, a little, um, a screen that tells you what's going on. There are various other different artificial intelligence-type devices that are working right now. The next one shows you a humanoid, speaks seventy languages, is able to process math much quicker than anybody can in the finance department, you've got great people, you, you know, but able to process things much bigger, much faster, more efficiently. That is the future, but it's now. The next one to the right on the top is an autonomous lawnmower. A lawnmower not being pushed or operated by a man, and that actually is one on a golf course, and that's now. That future is actually now. Imagine where you would have four people working and pushing or working lawnmowers on the lawn. This particular one has a camera. You can possibly have one person in front of four screens, running all four machines. So you've narrowed it down from four people to one person. And this particular one would tell you, like, let's say if a gator is there or something like that, to allow you to make an educated decision, say, okay, listen, keep going, run over it, or, you know, or not, you know, but it does have a camera on it. The lower left shows, we talked before about Uber and having driverless vehicles, and we talked about being able to have vehicles that fly, and, and buses that actually operated without a driver. This is that type of transportation. This is a driverless-type vehicle that can not only do individual transportation, but can do mass transportation. So the buses that we think about, when we say, okay, well, a driverless bus, that's one way to think about it, this one can fly and drop you off by stop by stop. This technology is being seeked now, and we're trying to stay abreast of what's going on so that we can be ready for it. Moving on, ocean rescue. That's a drone that will probably get there a lot faster than many of the swimmers that we have that are out there on the beach, that can go and drop in a lifesaving, a lifesaver to someone and rescue them. Again, as you can see, that's not a cartoon, that's real, that's now. Drones are being tested by BSO, as we know. The manager spoke before about a successful operation by BSO in which a drone was used, and this type of technology is what we're going to continue to look at, and to make sure that we enforce it, or try to get here. The last one is GIS in the future. Just imagine that. The guys in, the guys have now iPads, and they're out there trying to look and see what's going on. Imagine if they had a watch and they were able to see what's going on. But also imagine, in public safety, imagine if there's a, a fire, and you want to find out how the building is done or whatever, or how, you know, how the building divided, what room is here, where is a wall? If you're able to just look and find out what's going on, or the same thing for a police or an active shooter, when you go into a building, you're trying to find out what's going on. Imagine if we had the tools that would allow them to say, okay, there's rooms over here and see what's going on. As a matter of fact, since I'm shouting out everybody, let me shout out Mr. Santucci, who also, as he's looking for the, the improvements in City Hall, is looking at different types of technology that you can use your badge to find out where people are located in a building, just in case something happens. So this is now, as I said, this technology is now, and this is the type of thing that we're looking for. That's my final slide. Again, I just want to reiterate our motto, information technology services, we help you do what you do better.
I'm glad you're on board.
Thank you, I am too.
You didn't show the slide up there where it says, and this is technology that replaces the commissioners.
I want to keep my job, ma'am, so.
But all, all fun aside, the fiber optic, optics, tell me about that, because you, there are four centers, this is one of them. Are they also going to have the, the, the internet capability with City Hall or wherever, because they're outstationed? So explain to me, because I never really understood what that, that's, that's all about.
Got you. So right now, actually, we're working with Comcast to get the contracts squared away. So all four will have direct internet connecting each site, but we're also looking at more sites to have, right, right now, all internet comes back to the fire station one oh two, that's where all internet comes through. The issue with that is that it's, it's, it's a pipe that's, that's this big for everybody, right? As I spoke to you about everywhereness, you'll hear people say, especially as we put more applications in the cloud, they'll say, listen, I was able to connect faster from home, or I got an email on my phone before it came to my laptop or my computer. And the reason, obviously, is that internet access. So what we're doing is looking, as we look at, talked about next generation firewalls and everything, we're taking things out to the edge. So there will be more sites, not all four of these sites, and not every site, but we, there'll be more sites, probably about five sites, that will actually have their own internet pipe. So that way, it speeds up where the people are, like, for instance, Department of Environmental Services, City Hall, those places, so that way, if, if anything happened, you will have your own internet, you'll have your own access, and you'll be able to access things much faster. So that's all part of what we're proposing with Comcast now, to start off.
See, see, what I, what I'm getting at is that when I go over to Avin McKeithen, for instance, I don't know if they fixed the problem, but there was no, people would come in, we're having a meeting, and they can't get on the internet or whatever, this will solve that problem.
That's the goal.
That's what you're telling me. Okay, thank you.
Commissioners? Nothing? Just a couple of quick questions. We did, and we did put in the ESR one, and we did put in SharePoint, which I know is a major accomplishment. We extended our mobile workforce. Did we extend the city network to specific locations?
That's what we're talking about now, before. We're in that process right now, sir.
Did we initiate and deploy community mobile, uh, module to the ERP system?
Say again, please.
Did we implement or, or deploy our community module to our ERP?
We did not, and that would be connecting on, that's that whole ERP that we talked about. No, we did not.
Okay, and did we come up with the Digital City Innovation Plan?
No, we did not.
Okay.
I'll make that part of the goal for next year.
No problem. Excellent. Thank you, welcome aboard.
Thank you.
Thank you. We'll have Ms. Amanda Robin and her Assistant Director, Karen Bell Pierre.
While Karen hands out the presentation, I figure I'll get started since we're a little bit behind. Again, I'm Amanda Robin, Chief Human Resources Officer. With me tonight is Karen Bell Pierre, Assistant Director of Human Resources. I'll make sure Eddie has it up. Okay, jumping right in, Human Resources and Risk Management Fiscal Year Eighteen Achievements. Bear with me, this is actually two slides. So we completed the dependent audit last year, you probably remember we talking about it, that we were going to kick it off. We were able to implement internal controls for dependents, that includes dependents that are younger, that may age out, also dependents that may be spouses that turn sixty-five. So we've put controls in to be able to handle those situations. Estimated first-year savings by doing this audit and removing dependents that were not eligible was about a two-hundred-and-twenty-seven-thousand-dollar savings off the health plan. We also implemented a subrogation recovery program that we do in-house, so there's no percentage that goes to any other organization. So far this year, we have received back about fifty-two thousand dollars. Diana Gonzalez in my office was able to recover the full cost of a vehicle that was totaled in an accident that was not our fault, so that cost, that vehicle was able to be replaced at no cost to the city. We worked on containment of retirement claims cost. We estimate the first-year savings to be about a hundred-and-sixty-three thousand. Some of those changes, including changing premium equivalents, not subsidizing dependents that we were subsidizing in violation of policy, as well as changing the contributions for those that were over sixty-five, they were still being subsidized and by policy and code they shouldn't have been. So we fixed all of that and estimated about a hundred-and-sixty-three thousand dollars in savings. Ron already had mentioned it, but we did partner with ITS for the internet rollout, so I am happy to report that all of our forms are now electronic on the city's internet, which not only saves my staff time from having to provide forms from people calling in or emailing, saying, I need this, I need that policy, I need this document to change my direct deposit, or showing up at City Hall for those that don't have email, that wouldn't have access to it elsewhere. So they're actually able to access it, and staff within their own building are able to provide those documents. We did implement NeoGov Insight, and we are working towards implementation of Perform this year. Insight is the new applicant tracking system that I think we've talked about. Where Gans, we have to know that this means that we actually can send emails to our candidates that apply for a job, letting them know whether they have been selected or not, so that eliminated that problem. The Perform is the Performance Evaluation System. This will take the paper out of it, it'll make it workflow faster for all of our supervisors so that they are able to evaluate their staff. It even has a tool that throughout the year, they are able to add comments, whether positive or negative, into that evaluation, so they're not having to remember it at the end of the reporting period. So we think that'll show some efficiency and improvements on those. We also implemented a enhanced wellness portal. This allowed it to be more user-friendly, as you know, most of our workforce, about fifty percent, do not have access to computers or emails, and that created problems for us with the former portal that we had. So we went to a new one that's more user-friendly, both for desktop sites, but also for mobiles or workforce that have smartphones, are able to access that and be able to gather information, report, track their points, to see what they're earning for next year. Continuing on with achievements, we did increase staff's professional development via online courses and conferences. For years, HR staff did not go to conferences, they did not attend anything. We do work to find free events. Crystal Marshall and I in our office attended Gearing Group's Benefits Consortium, so to speak, in Palm Beach Gardens. Karen is actually going to the SHRM Conference this year, the HR Association. We haven't been able to do that for a while, so now we're actually staff that they can actually get out of the office and do those things. We did host the Third Annual Employee Appreciation Party, the fourth is coming, it's the first Friday in November, it will be a boomers again. We hosted the city's Employee Health Fair. For those of you that have been here a while, you'll remember, we used to do them, they ceased when the economy had some issues. So we brought that back, we actually were supposed to bring it back in sixteen, but Hurricane Matthew sort of messed that up for us, and we had to cancel and didn't have time to get it rescheduled before open enrollment. So this past year, we kicked off open enrollment with the Health Fair with all of our providers and allowed employees to come in and get information directly from the carriers before we actually submitted them for open enrollment. We awarded our insurance brokerage services, I'm going to talk a little bit more about that when we get to positions, we just awarded that in April to the Gearing Group. That was because of an elimination of a position, so I'll get into that a little bit in a further slide. We also, just recently, it's going to be coming to you in an August meeting, we awarded the TPA Third Party Administrator Services for liability and workers' comp, so that allows experts to handle it. We have adjusters that do all of the work, and we're just in the, it operates the middle man for it. We do have that health RFP that issued in June, so I do apologize, there's not a lot in the presentation about health insurance, because I'm currently under a cone of silence, so I can't talk a lot about the health insurance. We also will be issuing the liability, property and casualty, that's all of the insurances, building, flood, property, vehicle, all of that will be issued July of this year, and that can affect the budget. So right now, the budget is based on industry increases, and we're hoping that that RFP actually brings it in lower than what we estimated the budget. Getting into our fiscal year nineteen goals. Again, I can't talk that much about it, but we do want to implement changes to the health plan to reduce claims costs. We want to continue to monitor the liabilities and workers' comp claims for cost-saving opportunities, and I'll talk a little bit more about that when we get to the performance measures. We are finally going to complete the employee handbook revision. I know it's been a work in progress for quite some time. It's a handbook from nineteen ninety-two, we call it a revision, it was an entire rewrite, so it wasn't just revising an old manual, we had to completely rewrite it. So we're in the final phases of that with legal and hope to bring that forward sometime by the end of this calendar year. We want to develop a new risk management and safety manual, the one that we have is actually so old that it's not on a computer, so Gearing Group that we hired as our broker is actually going to be rewriting that for us. NeoGov training, so we implemented NeoGov to get it off the ground so that we would have better applicant tracking. Right now, our supervisors are not fully trained on using the system, so HR staff manages it. The goal is, is that we train our staff at the same time we train them when we implement Perform, on how to do everything on the actual applicant tracking system as well. We want to pursue integration of Navaline and Ventec. Ron had kind of mentioned Ventec, that's our online enrollment system for health benefits. Navaline is our payroll system. They actually are working, and I believe Ron actually just recently attended a conference, that they, they're almost ready to integrate, so that should alleviate a lot of staff's time and having to duplicate efforts of inputting one system and then sending to implement in another system. We want to reduce our time to fill for vacancies, NeoGov will help with that, it'll, it alleviates a lot of the paperwork that was required by our office. We also want to revamp the new hire orientation, onboarding and offboarding. Right now, it's very basic, we want to build that up and make it a little bit bigger, and additional information as well as when they're leaving, so that they're aware of when their final paycheck will, is, what they will get out of it. Right now, it's just a conversation, we want a formal program. And then we want to revamp our wellness program and increase the participation. Right now, we've kind of remained a little stagnant on the participation, but we want to target those wellness programs to actual health concerns that our current population have. So by way of example, let's say that diabetes is our number one issue with health, we want to target our wellness programming to those types of circumstances, which in turn would help to reduce costs. This is where I said I would talk about position changes. So this is the proposed org chart, this is not the current org chart, and I'm going to go over the, the specific changes. So we did have a risk manager position in there, currently is in this budget, it is vacant. We are proposing eliminating that position, we actually hired a broker. What we struggled with was we could not find somebody that could do all of the things that we needed in the office as a risk manager.[1781.86] that we needed in the office as a risk manager. By hiring a broker, we were able to get all that expertise in multiple people without having to pay multiple salaries in-house. So, we are proposing elimination of that, and then a reclassification of the current risk benefits specialist to a risk benefits officer. That comes with no fiscal impact, so there is no increase related to that, it's just getting the position to where it needs to be relative to the workload. We also are proposing adding an HR assistant. The cost savings ends up being about neutral with the elimination of the risk manager, and that's to assist with, we have a lot of clerical work in our office, a lot of filing, a lot of answering the phones, and so my current staff gets pulled from projects to deal with that type of day-to-day activity. If we have somebody in the office that's managing it, it'll allow them to focus on the projects. And then, the other change is reclassifying a HR technician. It's currently vacant right now, so we are not filling it, and this relates to audit findings that require a separation of financial services and HR doing the payroll processing. So, we needed to upgrade that position, so that we could get somebody with the skillset required to be able to handle that additional workload. And then, we'll get into the performance measures. So, I separated these by HR and risk, so we're going to talk about Human Resources first. To save a little bit of time, I won't go through every single number that's on here. We talked about the full-time employees. I do think it's important for you to see the full-time employees by HR department employee, and that ratio, which right now, be because we're proposing five employees in HR, it used to be four in HR, three in risk, we're proposing the HR assistant for the HR side. So, that's where that one increases, it's not actually an increase of a body between the two areas. Number of qualified applicants per requisition, I think this number is important and ties to NeoGov. In the past, the job postings were very simple, there wasn't a lot of detail available with Civic Plus, we had to actually write coding to get additional information on there. We are seeing an increase in qualified applicants coming through NeoGov, and I do attribute that to the recruitment efforts that they have available to them. It's a big public sector applicant system. That also helps with average days to fill, helps to reduce that number, which you see in seventeen was about seventy-three. I'm going to skip a couple of the numbers, I want to talk a little bit about the full-time employee turnover rate as well, which relates to NeoGov and our orientation. I think that we are getting more qualified applicants that actually fit the responsibilities of the job, which means they stay longer, rather than leaving within six months of employment, because it wasn't the right fit for them, it wasn't the right opportunity for them. Also, with leaving within one full-year service, that's where we find people that come on and don't necessarily meet the qualifications, but interviewed well, by resume, it looked like it, that the NeoGov allows a lot more. Plus, we have implemented controls within the department for new hire processing, so all departments for recruitment have to follow a process, and we are way scrutinizing it way harder than we did in the past, which I think makes that number go down. Of importance, total training hours, we continue to increase those. We did implement additional trainings this year. As you're aware, we're required to annually do the sexual harassment and workplace violence training, so we do continue to do that annually, but we were able to bring in supervision and government in-house to Central City campus, and allow thirty of our supervisory staff to participate in that. And then, we've been sending two employees for every session that has happened in other cities, so that we can continue to train our workforce. Getting into risk management performance measures. So, without getting into the details of what I can't talk about for next year, I can't talk about where we're at for this year. So, employee medical claims, we are estimating to be at about $4 million. What I want to say about that is keep in mind about stop loss. So, when an employee hits a certain level, or a dependent hits a certain level within the health insurance, that number is $175,000. When they hit $175,000 in claims for that individual, we no longer pay, but we do. We just get it as a reimbursement back. So, when you look at the numbers in the budget, we're kind of basing this on receiving stop loss back as well, it's a revenue. So, when you're looking at the numbers and you're seeing a budgeted number that may seem extremely high, we're also focusing on the revenues and what that stop loss would bring in. Retiree medical claims, this goes back to the achievements, where I said that we did see cost savings where we reduced. Keep in mind, the plan didn't change until January. So, some of those cost savings won't actually come into effect until we hit the end of this plan year. The plan year is based on a calendar year, not on a fiscal year. So, some of those savings will come through on that. Also, we, the stop loss goes into the employee claims, there's only one revenue line for the stop loss, so it's not offset by the retirees. Premium for flood and property insurance, we estimated an increase, we won't know that until we get the RFP back. If it comes in that high, we're hoping that it doesn't, but our broker assistant was estimating what those numbers would be based on industry standards. Total number of new workers' compensation claims, we, I had talked in an earlier slide about reducing those costs. What we have done is we've been able to manage it and look at ways to be able to settle claims that may not be in the best interest for us to continue paying on. I know that you've recently seen one of those come to a commission meeting. That's why that number is reduced. We've either settled, or the employee has been fully released and has no further entries, so they're no longer listed as a workers' comp claim. In that sense, then we anticipate that those, the total goes down, because the new ones go down as well. As far as employees participating in the wellness program, we are seeing a slow increase on that, but like I said, I'd like to target our programming to what our actual issues are within our workforce. Getting into future considerations. So, we want to look at a partnership down the road for an employee health clinic. It would not only save us costs on pre-employment, but also with workers' comp claims, and then also for employees to be able to go, rather than going to their primary care physician, if they just have a cold, being able to go to a clinic. As we've researched that, we found that we don't have an organization large enough to create our own capital to create that employee health clinic. So, we'd be looking at a partnership with either a local hospital or a local doctor's office to provide those services down the road. We also want to look further into organizational development and training. We had discussed the possibility down the road of a new position that would be able to assist with the training scheduling, but also with looking at the departments that do their own targeted training. For example, Sustainable Management does safety training relating to driving garbage trucks, and how to use a side loader, and how to use a front loader. We want to be able to work with those departments, so that we're tracking what they're doing, we're making sure that they're getting the training that they need based on their operation. We also want to continue working on employee outreach. One of the first things that we want to do is host meetings with the departments and ask them how they want us to communicate with them. That is the biggest struggle that we have, is that we have half the workforce on computers, half that are not. So, when we send something out, we are not sure how they want that communicated to them, and we want them to tell us, so we can help get that information out better. We also have talked about having HR staff located on-site at city facilities, to give them more of that one-on-one, if they need to report something, they need to, you know, change something for benefits, that they have somebody on-site that can assist with that, instead of having to make a phone call to us, hope that we're in the office, and be able to get in for a meeting and address it. It would also help with other little things like ID badges and things that we end up fixing that they have to come on-site to deal with. We want to look at making additional morale improvements internally. We plan to do this with additional employee engagement, meaning surveys, other events, maybe partnering with departments to do some fun things within the city, instead of it always being about work, so that we can get that morale improved, that seems to be one of our problems. And then, lastly, paying classification maintenance, it's something, not saying a full-on new paying classification study, but we do need to look at every, about every two to three years, certain classifications, and when we're talking about that, I'm talking about engineers, mechanics, certain positions that every two to three years change, and we need to reevaluate and make sure that we're meeting within the industries that we're recruiting the best available candidates. And with that, any questions?
Going back to goals from last year, were we able to utilize the South Florida Training Network relationship to looking for better training programs?
That's how we got supervision and government.
Okay. We have not implemented the exemplary recognition of words from the employees yet.
No, that we've not.
And we, rather than just revise and update, we have rewritten the entire, or it's still in the process.
It's still in the process.
And the service awards, employee appreciation, we obviously are still doing.
We still continue.
Okay. Thank you. What is your budget request?
My total budget request, for which side?
Well, how about the fact that we don't have it in the presentation at all? I think it's a different problem.
Part of that problem is, is that I have two RFPs out, so I can give you a number. I don't, that's why we didn't put it in the presentation, because I didn't want to give a number, and while we have RFPs out, that that number needs to change. We'll have it done in time for the proposed budget on the health insurance. The liability won't come in for a little bit later, so those numbers will remain the same. So, I can give you what we estimate those budgets to be, and hope that there's nothing that changes. The HR side, there was an increase, it came in right around a million dollars, which, offhand, I don't remember, I accidentally only grabbed my risk, not my HR budget numbers. The increase was mostly related to NeoGov training, and then there were some errors in our insurance services allocations, so that kind of ticked up my budget, because we weren't paying our full share. So, that's the changes in that. On the, on the risk side, total-wise, we're looking at about a, about a million-dollar increase. We're looking at it for a total of 12.8 million.
And that's attributed to what?
Health insurance and liability property insurance. We actually reduced line items otherwise, including the salary line.
Public Affairs and Marketing, and we'll see if Ms. Medina Stewart can break her own record and do this really quickly, since we're behind. So, if you can just speed it up.
I just have to stick to the script.
Yes, please, thank you. If you would like to introduce your staff quickly?
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Commissioners. As you all know, my name is Rebecca Medina Stewart, and I am the Director of Public Affairs and Marketing. My staff here to my left, I have Janine Knoyer, who is our Marketing Coordinator, she is our newest addition to the staff, and most of you know David Hunt, who is our Multimedia Production Specialist. And it is my goal, I assure you, to keep this under one hour. Let's get right to it. My areas of, or the areas of responsibility for our office remain the same, with exception to a couple, well, with exception to one thing. We've actually begun this year designing and creating the monument sign messages for the new electronic monument sign over on Federal Hillsborough. And then, the other point that I really want to make about this particular graphic is that public communications and community outreach continues to be the most important job that we do in public affairs, and you will see that demonstrated here in our crisis communication numbers coming up. Our 2018 achievements, first, we have marketing and communications. We've actually provided support for fifty-one total events so far this year, which includes marketing collateral, traditional and social media advertisement, community notification and outreach, event coverage, and speech edits. Secondly, our department has assisted economic development and regional marketing efforts, like welcoming the CCIM into our city recently. This organization is recognized for its expertise in commercial and investment real estate. We've also worked to market the city at the annual Broward Palm Beach County Realtors Association Breakfast recently, and I'm happy to say that it's the second year in a row that Deerfield Beach has managed to steal the show. We completed the dfb.city/hurricane page, and that is just simply a hurricane page that is specific to Deerfield Beach residents. Residents in most municipalities are directed to the county for hurricane, all of their hurricane needs and directions and instructions. We do the same thing for most, for a lot of different needs, but you can get everything that is specific to Deerfield Beach residents right from our hurricane page, including a new interactive map that residents can punch in their address in, they can get all of the closest grocery stores, gas stations, and other hurricane-related information. We've completed the transition from Code Red to Alert DFB this year. We essentially went from Code Red, in which we had about thirty thousand registrants, to Alert DFB, which is currently, our numbers are crazy on that, we have about a hundred and fifty-four thousand registrants on Alert DFB currently, in a city of seventy-nine thousand, roughly seventy-nine thousand residents. The reason that number is so high is because what we've seen with this new alert system is that we've had households register their entire family, grandma, uncle Bob, you name it. And so, we literally have households that have five or six registrants, which is wonderful. We've also just recently launched community outreach initiatives and educational campaigns like Alert DFB, which is what I just mentioned. We also launched this year, "We Love DFB Seniors," or in social media talk, "We Heart DFB Seniors." And we worked with community development on that project in feeding meat seniors on Valentine's Day. We also launched Stormy, the stormwater specialist this year, and that was our stormwater prevention and educational campaign. I'm also really excited about this little bad boy here, Pioneer Grove Branding. This was, this is, this is essentially the beginning of our Pioneer Grove branding, and we worked real hard on this logo this year, there were a lot of renderings for this, but it mixes the new retro with the old industrial, and so we're really excited to see, to see the continuing evolution of our branding for Pioneer Grove. And of course, we're continuing to see steady growth of our social media reach. Performance measures, media releases. We do believe that this number will decrease as the social media press release continues to become the standard for distributing public information. And all, what the social media press release is, essentially a headline and a link to the, to the actual website with more information. Web visits, we're predicting a drop in these numbers this year, because we've had some maintenance issues with the underwater camera, which draws large numbers to our website. The camera, however, is back up and running, I'm happy to report, and we do have additional underwater video projects planned for this year, that I believe will get those numbers back up next, by next fiscal year. Web page views, just like the number of web visits, we do expect a little drop this year, but expect to get this number back up next year as well. Newsletter subscribers, while this number has grown from fiscal, slightly, from fiscal seventeen to eighteen, it is a stagnant number compared to the rate of growth that we are seeing on social media. Every single marketing trend is telling us that consumers want to see less email blast because of junk mail and spam, but in addition to this trend, and more specific to Deerfield Beach, we do have external groups who are exercising their rights under the public records laws and requesting these email distribution lists in order to blast out politically motivated messages. So, we've had residents calling in and opting out of, of the newsletter distribution. It's simply a trend that's specific to Deerfield Beach. We've also seen all of these trends play out in our click-open rates. In fiscal seventeen, only fifteen percent of email blasts delivered across some of our newsletter, all of our newsletters were opened. This fiscal year, we're anticipating about eight percent of those email blasts delivered will be opened. Film permits, this is a number that's a little tricky and difficult to predict, because the state of Florida has scrapped the film incentives program as of a couple of years ago, and while we're still getting very small or limited shoots, we are losing a lot of productions to Georgia. The CPG is currently lobbying this on a state level, so we'll just have to wait and see what happens in the coming year. Video, this is a metric that includes promotional videos, public service announcements, and proof of performance videos. This number is definitely going to continue to rise, why? Every single social media statistic and marketing statistic is reporting that video views are rising by the millions, and daily. Consumers are more likely to click a video instead of read about a product, and virtual reality applications are already here. For example, Facebook Spaces is supposed to be releasing its virtual reality application this year, probably this fall. Graphics, we are one of the very few municipalities that produces graphics and motion graphics in-house. Our video and graphics capabilities play a part in just about everything that we do, from marketing to educational campaigns, to merchandising, social media, branding, and the list goes on. Facebook follows continues to be a major contributor to our community. Facebook Follows continue to climb as Facebook continues to be our most successful social platform, especially in terms of engagement. And you can see that by looking at the Facebook Engagement and Reach numbers. Fiscal '17 is trending higher right now, and that's because we had three major events which drove up those numbers. We had two hurricanes, Hurricane Matthew and Irma in the same fiscal year, as well as the boil water alert in February of 2017. Twitter and Instagram are the city's newer platforms for social. We're really going to be digging into these platforms this year. There was some buzz that Twitter and Facebook were on their way out, but that there is much more information to indicate the opposite of that. Additionally, millennials and Gen Z'ers are flooding Instagram right now. Statistics and studies tell us that Gen Z'ers, which of course are the little siblings of millennials, will account for 40% of all consumers by 2020. That's a big number, and so there is a lot of focus on engaging this generation of social users, and we intend to do the same this next fiscal year. The city has just added Flickr. It's our newest social platform, and that's basically a place where you can go and get all of your event photos, and we just wanted to make that accessible to the public so that they can get all of their event photos when they attend. Moving on to our Crisis Communications. During Hurricane Irma, we saw our Facebook reach hit more than 450,000 organically. This essentially means that our social messages landed on more than 450,000 threads. Twitter reach climbs to more than 140,000 during Irma, and that's with less than 1,500 followers at the time. But our reach was over 140,000, which is another reason we need to dedicate some time to expanding and growing that audience as well. Social Media Posts understandably surged in the days leading up to Irma, during Irma, and post-Irma. In the weeks that followed the storm, I can tell you that my team worked a regular eight-hour day, went home, fixed dinner, and worked on social media all night. I say this because it's important for this commission to understand that social media is our new norm, and it is a 24-hour, seven-days-a-week job, and we are doing it currently. We sent out a total of 87 news releases during the storm and 87 email blasts. We also shot nine short videos for everything from promoting sandbag giveaway to proof-of-performance cleanup videos. Budget Summary and Comparisons. I've included some comparisons for you to look at. Each of the cities that I've provided here for you are examples... these are examples, rather, of cities that are doing what they do with more staff and with more money, with the exception of Tamarack, who has less staff but still more money. And I thought it was important to show this because we are constantly asked, "Why don't we do it like Pompano?" Or, "Why don't we do it like Coral Springs?" And so I just want to make sure that people understand what the comparisons really look like. Our recommended budget total is $452,408. There is an $81,000 increase, a roughly $81,000 increase. Those increases come from insurance, marketing and printing, as we anticipate newer projects with Pioneer Grove this year and a few other marketing projects this year, and also software and licensing. And while I'm on this particular slide, I think it's important to note too, because I've been here for six years now, and people don't understand that we haven't been a Public Affairs and Marketing Department for six years. I came on as the city PIO, and we've been a department for two years. This is the second full year that we've been a department. We've been creating processes, we need software, licensing rights, royalties for music, video equipment, all the time. So I just want to make that a point to mention. Finally, some future considerations beyond fiscal '19. One of the first things that we would ask you to closely consider is the opportunity to do some closed captioning for the live streaming of all commission meetings. This is something that is on the radar of every single municipality. It's important... and it's important, something for us that's important to do for our hearing impaired community. Secondly, I would like you to begin, or I would hope that you would begin, or I would ask you to consider, looking at remote production of our commission meetings. We currently use Comcast to help us in the production of these meetings, to get this stuff online. They come in, record our meetings, then upload the video the next day to our website. With the remote production, we would have added cameras in our chambers. We would have someone switching from a remote location from camera to camera. We would have live... and this is all going on while we're live streaming, and this is, of course, complete with closed captioning. This production would also allow for a faster upload of our city meetings to the web, a web channel that would also allow us to loop our city programming. There are many cities moving in this direction, and they're using companies like Swaget and Castis Video, and we're currently taking a look at some of their stuff right now. As I mentioned earlier, social media has made the demand for communications to be a 24-hours, seven-days-a-week job. I would ask that the commission begin thinking about bringing in a social media specialist who would work outside the regular nine-to-five, posting, answering questions, and monitoring social media on nights and weekends. We are also asking that you would begin thinking about adding more cameras at certain locations throughout the city where live streaming might be a possibility as we continue, my department continues, to think of more creative ways to market and show off our city, our beautiful city. I would also respectfully ask the commission to think about expanding our marketing options to radio and TV. Comcast is currently working on an advertisement program on their cable channels. So we're not talking about advertising on your ABC, NBC, CBS, the traditional stuff that we're used to, most of us have grown up with, but we're talking about actually advertising on cable TV, on their cable channels. And finally, we're asking you to consider the possibility of replacing our website vendor in the near future to one who might be able to provide a higher caliber website and most especially, a higher caliber mobile application. Because we are seeing that mobile users, that is just how everyone is doing it, and that mobile applications are just going to get sharper and the numbers of users are going up. That is the preferred way that people currently are getting their information and accessing information, and I just feel like we could do a better job of bringing in a better mobile application for our city and for our residents. Was that... did I hit my mark? Am I under?
You broke your record. You broke your personal record. I would like to see a breakdown on what the increases... I know we've got the three points in which that falls under, but if we could see where those increases are, that would be great.
Sure.
Any comments from the commission?
Yes.
Vice Mayor?
Very quickly, when we do the live streaming, will we be able to, if we decide to do this, will we be able to take questions from people who are calling, I mean, looking and whatever? I don't know that... I just, I know that it's going on, and I'd like to be able to do that. I think we ought to be able to do that for the benefit of those people who can't get out to the commission meetings.
I think we... a better way to do that, we wouldn't be able to do it with live streaming, but we would be able to do it with a social media consultant who would be taking the questions through social media, engaging the public. As we stream the meeting live, they can go ahead and take the questions, and those can come right into the clerk's inbox, and she can go ahead and pass them right over.
Pass them over to the mayor. Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Grossman?
Can you talk a little bit more, get more information on the filming? Like, the state offers the tax credits. How can... I mean, how does that, how does that work to a layperson like me? Because you mentioned Georgia earlier, and I don't watch much TV, surprise, surprise, but the little that I do watch, I am astounded that if you watch the credits today, how much is filmed in Georgia. Like, in Netflix, everything is filmed in Georgia, it seems like. So how does that work? And can Deerfield Beach promote ourselves? Because other than Miami, I think we're kind of a hidden jewel here with our beach, our pier, our barina, our quiet waters park. We offer a lot of locations that are attractive to filming opportunities.
When the film incent... when they scrapped the film incentives program, essentially they made it very difficult for casting companies and film production studios to actually make it in South Florida. So, and because there is no incentive to come to Florida and shoot, a lot of these productions who would normally shoot in Florida because they hate the backdrop of the swamps and the Everglades and, you know, something, the beaches, and the weather most especially, they're going to Georgia because they can find locations that look similar to Florida locations, which is why we are losing a lot of this business to the state of Georgia. With respect to whether or not we can market ourselves, the CVB does heavy, heavy, heavy marketing, even now, even after the film incentives program was scrapped. They continue to do heavy marketing to bring film, large shoots into the state of Florida. I believe a year ago, Baywatch was filmed here. When they came, when they came and actually did the site search and/or the site survey for Deerfield Beach and the site check, they wanted to film their entire film in our city. They love the S-curve, they love the beach, they love what everything looked like, and... but because there were no incentives, they just, they chose, they chose two or three hot locations in Deer... between Deerfield, Miami, and Boca, and they moved the rest of their production to Georgia. The CVB is lobbying hard on this, but I don't know, aside from just continuous heavy marketing on our part and really showing the world what Deerfield Beach is and who she is and how great she is, I think that the CVB, that's pretty much their job, and I would say that we continue to market the city and grow the marketing of the city, and that's probably the best that we can do.
If I could just add to that?
Briefly.
Yeah, I'll be brief. So basically, I think the state of Florida, the governor's office, determined that the return on investment for putting millions of dollars toward the film industry, it was not paying off, and they decided to scrap it. Another state that just recently did so, which used to have all the reality TV shows, is Alaska. They drastically cut theirs as well, and once they did that, you started seeing all those shows and movies go away, and they're just now going into Western Canada where you have better film incentives. Thanks.
Could I ask one question? The idea of recording the commission meetings ourselves, would that be a costly endeavor to get going? I mean, it sounds like it'd be better than the Comcast. I mean, and we're about to renovate things. It sort of makes, if the timing would be...
Quite honestly, and if I can speak frankly, anything would be better than the Comcast.
That's kind of what I was thinking.
We have several options that we are looking at doing. We definitely need to upgrade the current way in which we are shooting and filming our meetings. And I think that in looking into things like closed captioning, with that, you can get through, through different services and different companies, you can get like a bundle package, so to speak, where they would include your live stream, closed captioning, which, you can get your live stream, closed captioning, you can get remote switching, which is literally not a, not an employee, a paid employee for the city, switching buttons and going from camera one to camera two, checking audio sound and all that. But we're talking about a live body in another state that actually houses this particular production would be switching the buttons for us. And they would be recording the video, they would be moving the cameras, and uploading this before even the end of the night. In the middle of a meeting, the beginning of that meeting is already uploading to our website, so it would just be about that.
I just think the way you describe it, it would, we'd end up getting a lot more participation. And that's consistent with the transparency of putting all the economic records on the posts and more people seeing the meetings. So I think it makes sense for us to look a little bit stronger at it.
Yeah. There again, just quickly. The other great benefit to this is we'll begin recording all city meetings, so planning and zoning, community appearance board, special magistrate. It also allows us to go to remote, not to remote, but to actually take that, the camera system and audio system, AV system, to other locations such as this or to the Ovita, McKee and Tigler Center for a district meeting or Constitution Park for a district meeting, and you can actually live stream it from there as well and record it. Because our goal, again, is to put as much as we possibly can onto our website.
I, that's a very strong case for it, I think.
Can I just add to that, too? Some of the larger costs that we're looking for that are going to be closed captioning costs. It is not a cheap, it is not cheap. It is expensive, but it is, it is a necessity, and we really need to do that.
And just for, again, clarification, all these future considerations are not for the upcoming fiscal year '19, they're for fiscal year '20 and beyond. So we're already beyond the expenditures for this upcoming year. Thank you.
Yeah, but I would think that closed captioning ought to be our first priority, though.
Well, we're certainly working on the closed captioning, but doing a bigger scale video, live video, is something that we'll be looking to do as part of the City Hall renovations. It'll be within the chamber upgrades to purchase that equipment and infrastructure.
I just don't want Mrs. Attorney for us to get hit with a lawsuit by the population that depends on closed captioning.
We've already been hit by that lawsuit, and we're already working towards closed captioning. It has happened every city in the state of Florida.
And I will say that we were already looking at closed captioning options before that came about. It was something that was already in our plan. And we are looking right now in the short term for some fixes to that, to have that on the website and available to our hearing impaired. Yes.
A few months ago, when I was out ill, I attended the commission meeting through my computer and phone. That was live. What's the difference between that and live streaming?
That is live streaming.
So we have it?
We have live streaming, but we're trying to upgrade that service.
Okay. I thought maybe I missed something. Okay, thank you.
Glad you explained that, because I wasn't a help like you.
Just a couple of things, if I can make a recommendation, and this is something that I think each department, moving ahead, you know, that I would like to see for the rest of these workshops, is that whatever the presentation is, there's one page, it's all the same, just like everybody else has. Each department says, "This is what our budget request is." We've seen a couple of different styles in which it was presented. It needs to be consistent, and it should be in each department's presentation, because I do give you credit, city manager, you're not, this isn't a matter of a wish list and then it comes forth, this is, these are tied in with your recommendations. So we want to be able to see what each one of them are, and easily, to be able to look at that. My other recommendation would be that we put goals in the budget last year, and some of them are very lofty, and some of them are not single-one-year budget, single-one-year goals, and some of them are stretch goals. And even with some of the presentations tonight, we hear recommendations for us to look at long-term. We might want to look at, these are our 2019 goals, that this is what we're going to achieve. We have stretch goals that go beyond that, but we know that we are committing to achieving this certain amount of goals this year. Beyond that, we have some stretch goals, and even beyond that, you might want to look at some five-year potential, potential goals for each department. So as a city, we can look at it, because there were some great recommendations to us tonight, but you had to clarify that these are not included in this current budget. These are things we need to look for future considerations, much like when we were tasked with years ago, you know, improve our Fitch rating, get our reserves up. That took us a few years to do that. Government doesn't turn on a dime, so you have to be able to build towards these things. It helps us create some long-term strategic planning that we incorporate. It helps us create some long-term strategic planning that we incorporate each year in our budget to be able to hit those goals. So if we could do that, plus it gives us a little bit of metrics as well, so that's what I would like to see moving forward.
All right. We'll certainly make those adjustments for Tuesday and Wednesday night, and then we will go back in, with the exception of the risk management budget, and we'll change the slides to be a little more clear for those that may look...
Just the one, just the one, that's all.
Yep.